Okay, it's seven o'clock. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Urbana City's Community of the Hall meeting. Clerk, will you please call the room?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Next, we have the approval of minutes of previous meetings, a meeting for September 16th, 2020, 2024, City Council minutes, and 2023 Committee of the Hall minutes.
So moved.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Okay, that was Mary Alice moving and Jaya seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Presentations, oh, next, are there any additions to the agenda? Yes, Mayor Marlin?
Just a revised version of item number two under new business, which is the liquor license resolution.
Okay, we have a revised version of that?
That's on the dais in front of the council members.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, thank you. Presentations and public input, does anybody wish to speak to the Committee of the Hall Seeing no one coming up? Now's the time.
I instead of stopping this. Oh, sorry, right here. Sorry. Hello, I'm Sandra Otten, and I live in Myra Ridge, and I own a business on South Philo Road. And on the 26th of August, our receptionist had an incident where a apartment building that overlooks the parking lot, someone yelled at her from the top story of the parking lot and threatened to kill her with a gun. And it was a third incident for him harassing her. And he said, you know, used explicitives, and they don't know each other, so it wasn't like a domestic or something like that. So our COO called MetCAD, and MetCAD said UPD would be there within, shortly. And two hours later, they still weren't there. And then they called UPD and was told, no one's coming. That was it. So I came down here to try to get this, I couldn't believe it, like, really? Like, I was just flabbergasted. But I finally, so I told the story to the receptionist here, it took her a while, she found the person who told me that, and I had a, just a conversation in the hallway with him. And he, I proceeded to tell him, and he said, yes, that's what happened, we wouldn't go out to, on a call for, for something like that. It's like, something like a threat of someone's life? What are you saying, you know? And he said, well, it was already de-escalated, and so we wouldn't go out and escalate the situation. And I said, well, that's not good enough, like, I do not understand your rationale. What, what do you want us to do, ma'am? He was very, a little bit condescending to me, just like, well, what do you want us to do? It's like, well, at the very least, I want you to go talk to him. I want to know his name, I want to get a restraining order against him, you know, like, I want some action here. And he's like, do you want to talk to my supervisor? I said, yes, I do. So then I talked to the supervisor, and the supervisor basically told me the same thing, that, you know, he took, he took the information, and because he wasn't familiar with it as the other gentleman was, and he really told me the same thing. And I said, this is, you know, he said, if we, you know, intervened, every time somebody yelled at somebody else, or every time somebody just said, I'm gonna kill you, you know, it's just, sometimes people just say that casually. I said, he said he had a gun, he doesn't know her, this is a third incident. And he said, oh, I didn't know it was the third incident. Then we would have, we probably should have done something, we probably should have. But that was the first time. Then he said, but you know, we're really busy. So then all of a sudden, it was that they were too busy, which I had not heard that all along, I had just heard they weren't gonna do it. So they did go out, talk to him, and it, and we got a restraining order against him coming on our property at least, so that did happen. But I'm caught, I'm here today to tell you about it, just because I'm hearing other incidences in the community of what feels like, we'll go to the calls we want to, kind of thing. And, and yet I see swarms of cops, you know, when somebody gets pulled over, all of a sudden, there's five cops there. And daytime situation, one person in the car, five people, five cops there. So I'm not trying to do the cops' job for them, but I also think they should be doing their job, regardless of whether they're busy or not, to not come to a call where somebody has been threatened with a gun, seems ridiculous to me. So I just wanted to let you know about that. That's all. Anybody have any questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
This is actually your time to just talk to us.
Yeah, well, if you need, if I need to clarify anything, but, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Committee of the Hall? Well, that would be presentations, so yeah. If we don't have any more public input, and is there any public input emails before I move on? Okey-dokey. Just coming up to the desk here?
Your presentation should be preloaded on the desktop there of that computer.
Therese?
Yes, James.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to say something about this presentation.
Go ahead.
A few weeks ago, there was a news story about the MTD looking at annexations, and some of the annexation property is in the city of Urbana. And so I took that opportunity to reach out to the MTD, because when something like an annexation process goes underway, members of the community want to know more about what it means, what the services are like that would be involved with that. I thought it would be good for MTD to come share with us, as the City Council, the information on what they were looking at, what the opportunity for service might be associated with that annexation, and give us a chance to ask a few questions about it, in case we hear from our constituents when it moves forward.
Thanks, James. And your, your name is?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, my name's Jay Rank, I'm the Operations Director here at MTD. And Amy Snyder is, is the Deputy Managing Director, she's with me here in the audience for support.
You'll have to pull that microphone closer to you.
Okay, sorry.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, all right, that can hear me. Yeah, so basically, yeah, we prepared a little presentation about our annexation process, and I'll kind of walk through it, and happy to take questions. So, yeah, basically, I'll walk through the, the Local Mass Transit District Act, the process we do for annexations, and then there's four areas in Urbana that are up for consideration. So the Local Mass Transit District Act, basically, Section Three defines forming a district, and Section Eight talks about the annexation process. But basically, what we look for is properties that are contiguous to our district, that's not classified as farmland, and within a corporate limits of a municipality, and in this case, in some cases, a township qualifies for that as well. So that's generally what we look for, to see if parcels are eligible for annexation. There is another option where a landowner can petition to voluntarily annex into the district, which is something you might be hearing about in the news as well in Champaign. So for reference, we have intergovernmental agreements with the city of Urbana, Champaign, and Savoy from 2005 and 2008, which basically agrees that when areas in the city is developed, that we also look to annex, so that there's, there are services throughout the city that are, that are kind of equitable throughout. So, so we, we do that, we attempt to do that, although our annexation process is a little bit different than, like, a park district or sanitary district, where, where it happens automatically. So basically, we have to, well, I'll walk through the steps here in a second. So the steps, yeah. Basically, we have administrative steps that we need to look into, like I described before, where we look to see, if me or my staff looks to see, based on the Champaign County GIS data, if a parcel is basically classified as urban, if it's contiguous to our district, and almost everything's in municipality or township, so, so that, basically, anything that's, that's contiguous is, is eligible. So then, we look to if, to see if we need to do any engineering surveys or parcel identifications to make sure, so if we're taking the next step, then we'll get our council to, to take a look, to make sure that, that everything is, in fact, what we think it is. So then, the next step would be to, oh, sorry, let me take a step back. So basically, we have identified a handful of locations that meet the eligibility requirements, and basically, kind of group them together into, basically, areas that are eligible for annexation. If our board decides to go ahead with it, then we would set up public hearings for, for basically, public comment. So we, we need to put publication in the newspaper, I believe it says, three times, at least 30 days in advance of the, the public hearing, and, and then inform any property owners that, that have parcels that are over five acres, and send them a certified, a first-class mail certified, so that we let them know that, that this is happening. So then we have a public hearing, and, and our board takes input, and then doesn't vote on that until the next meeting where we set. So that's basically the process. Now, we have four areas that are eligible, and I've got the map up here, and basically, our district is in blue, and the, the red parcels are, are eligible. So basically, they are urban land use, not farm, and contiguous to the district or contiguous to a parcel that's also eligible. So this is the map of, of North Urbana, so near Airport Road, you can see Frasca Field is, is the main element there, but Route 45 kind of bisects it as well. So that's the first area. The second is Northeast Urbana, so basically, at the corner of Airport and High Cross Road, there's a significant, significant amount of, of land up there that, that is, is technically eligible, some single-family residential, and a lot of that is, is actually university land, that's, that's, yeah, classified differently, not as farmland, so, so all of that is eligible. In East Urbana, the noteworthy spot here is the Urbana Walmart, so this is, several parcels, headed from High Cross Road to 150 eastbound, there's, there's a handful, and then a few parcels that are just east of High Cross Road, north of, north of university. And then the last area is, is South Ridge, so that subdivision is, continues to develop, and we've annexed in the past, and this, it, it continues so. There's that strip of red and, to the south and to the west, and then there's a, a church there as well, it's, that's technically eligible. So those are the four areas, and basically, what it means is, we, our board has decided to have public hearings for several areas around the community, not just Urbana, but Champaign too, for areas that are eligible. And so we, we plan to have public hearings, and then our, well, based on the, the discussion at the, the public hearing, then our, our board will then decide whether or not they want to pursue annexation in the future. So, happy to take any questions.
James?
So let's use this example here, thanks for the presentation. So part, most of South Ridge is already in the district?
Yes.
And so these, these strips are areas that have been, where houses have been built lately?
Yeah, yeah, or being built, yeah.
And so what, what would be the change of the experience for individuals who own those homes, as far as how they are served by the MTD?
Well, yeah, right now, I mean, in this case, we could look to drop the red route down further, to get closer to, to their house, that's something we, we would consider, but, yeah, ultimately, you know, they, they currently have access, if they wanted to ride the bus, and, and would continue to, so at this point, they would just be kind of chipping in to help, you know, share the, the cost of, of the service.
Okay, and for any of the other areas, are there specific changes to service that if they were annexed, the district would consider to, to serve those areas?
I would say the, yeah, the first two here, north of Airport Road and the northeast, we, we could consider, we have, we have a new on-demand service called the Northeast Connect, and, and the boundaries of that could be extended, so that, so that these areas could be included in that service area, whereas right now, they're not. So that's, that's something that would be easier to do, because it's an on-demand van service, opposed to a fixed route.
And currently, if you weren't in this red, or if you were in this red area that's not annexed, and you called for that on-demand, you would tell them they weren't in the service area?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
So just to be crystal clear, when you say they're being annexed, that means that their parcels are going to be taxed, the MTD rate, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay. And so you, you talked about the notification process, the newspaper and the public hearing, but you said that you're only sending notifications to parcels of five acres or more, so does that mean that, other than the public notices in the newspaper, that people who have a single-family residence are not being notified of this change?
Well, I believe the newspaper is the way that that's done, yeah.
So you don't have, is there a way that you can mail those people and let them know that this is coming? Because otherwise, they're going to be surprised by their tax bill.
I, we could look into that, I'm not sure how that works, if we have access to all the, the parcel addresses, we probably could do that. I can, I can take a note, I'm not sure if we've done that in the past or not, but we can look at that.
Thank you.
Grace?
Do you know what the tax rate is?
I sure do, yeah, it is, so, yeah, the equalized assessed value is one-third of the property's value, and our rate is $0.34 for every $100 of equalized assessed value. So I think that more or less equates to less than 5% of the tax bill, depending on, you know, where exactly you're being taxed, I guess.
You said $0.34?
Dollars.
Dollars?
Dollars for every hundred dollars.
One dollar?
For every hundred dollars, yeah.
Or $100?
For equalized assessed value, okay.
That makes more sense, thank you. And so essentially, if I break down, so the pink areas, you're saying will have some increased taxes as they're brought into this, hopefully some expanded services, right?
That's, if our, if our board decides to, to annex, so these four areas are eligible and have been eligible, in some cases, for some time now, and, and we haven't pursued it, so it will be up to them, based on the public hearings. But yeah, I, I think that, yeah, if we have a service to offer, that makes it more likely that we would, we would annex, but it doesn't require that.
And I imagine that the tax revenue is what helps keep MTD affordable, for a dollar a ride, and a lot of free passes for a lot of the population, is that right?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, chipping in and helping spread out the cost to everybody is, yeah, you know, kind of the equitable way to go, that, you know, anybody that, that lives in Champaign-Urbana benefits from MTD, whether you use it or not, so yeah, help, helping share in the cost is a part of this, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, Chris, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, thanks, James. Can residents in the, the proposed annex area go, say no, like, vote it down, or?
Um, no.
No, so if your board decides to annex, they're annexed? That, am I understanding that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
James?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, for the public's benefit, I live in Urbana, I'm in the Mass Transit District. The part of my tax bill, property tax bill, that MTD accounts for is a little bit more than the township component of my tax bill, the Cunningham Township, and significantly less than the Parkland College component of the tax bill. So that .345, the Cunningham Township is .2995, so that's relatively how it fits into the slices for those of us who are already in the district.
I have a question. With this slide that you have right here, I'm noticing there's a cemetery there, and the woods there, and exactly in annexing, in annexing those particular two parcels, especially the woods, do people use those woods for camping, or anything that you know of, that, for any kind of recreation?
I don't, I don't believe, so I don't know, to be honest, I, I believe it's owned by the university, so I don't know if they do research there, or, or what, but, yeah, ultimately, it's, you know, a, a non-agric, agricultural use, so it does make it so that that's eligible, and, and then the, the properties north of it then are eligible because of that.
And the cemetery, what are you gonna do with all that land?
Well, I mean, it'll just be part of the district like anything else, like, cemeteries currently in our district, I suppose.
So buses would be able to take people to visit their ancestors at the cemetery? You have a line going to the cemetery?
Well, I don't know how busy it is, but basically, this would be part of an on-demand service, where you could request a ride, to say, I want to go from Lincoln Square to the Clement Cemetery, and you'd be able to. I don't know how often that would happen, or how common that would be, more, more likely, I mean, we drive past it towards, you know, somebody's residence up there, but.
I just wanted to know, I just wanted to understand the service, you know, because you're talking about expanding service?
Yeah.
And I didn't know if that also meant that, you know, something else may be going on, so I just wanted to understand how that service would be expanded to those particular places.
Sure, sure. Well, somebody could get there, if, if they, if the board approves that, votes yes.
Okay. James?
So, so to be clear, the brownfield woods and the cemetery, those are both nonprofit organizations?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So they wouldn't end up paying taxes to the MTD if they're exempt from property tax?
Correct, correct.
But including them allows you to connect to the properties further north?
Yeah.
So that's why they're being included, even though they wouldn't generate any tax base for the MTD?
That's true, there's a few.
And so like, the church in South Ridge?
Yeah, yep.
They would be added, but they're not going to pay taxes because they're exempt as a, as a church? If the use of that property changed in the future to be a commercial something or other, then they would be on the hook for taxes?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Could you please email this presentation? I'm interested in just having the maps, so I, if someone asks me questions, I at least have something that I can, I can show them.
Sure, I, well, I believe you, you guys already have this, so.
So the Clerk's office has a copy, and I can forward it to the council tomorrow morning.
Okay, thanks. And I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is staff reports. We have Will.
Yes, oh, only very briefly, though, we have JD from the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission here as well.
Okay, and JD?
McLanahan, sorry.
McLanahan?
McLanahan, yeah.
I'll pull it up in a second, see.
Give us an update?
Yeah, so I'll introduce the staff report today real quickly, and then I'll hand it over to JD. So today is a report on the ARPA projects annual reports, and this is for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, which is one full quarters worth of, well, one full year, one full years worth of quarters for all of our projects. This, having, reviewing the ARPA projects was also part of the council goals for 1.3, promoting community well-being, completing a systematic review of ARPA subrecipients' projects, programs, and evaluating outcomes. So if you remember, early on, we contracted with RPC to oversee and manage our grant applications for our ARPA funds. So today, here again, we have JD, who's really been, well, just doing everything for ARPA, so he's going to present the project reports for all of our subrecipients and go over there. So it's a lot of slides, the presentation today is a little less slides, but we still have a lot to cover, so I'll stop talking and hand it to JD.
Great, thanks, Will. Like you said, I am JD McLanahan, I'm a planner for RPC, and I have been the one working on kind of the ARPA administration. I've been working on this process, but haven't appeared before y'all since we were in the application period, like, winter of 2022, I think, so it's been a little while, so there's a lot of updates. Like Will said, the slides here are a little condensed from what's in your packet, but it's still a lot of content, so I'll try to get through it quickly in a timely manner. So for the presentation today, the three main sections are just kind of an overview of the ARPA process and where we are, project summaries for each of the individual projects that y'all have funded through this process, so that's the, the meat of it, and then ending with a few staff takeaways, so just kind of overarching points, or things that Will and I have learned in the process. So to start with the overview, just to, just as for a refresher, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed in March of 2021, and this allocated $12.97 million to the city of Urbana for their state and local fiscal recovery funds, that, that funding opportunity. Of those funds, the city elected to take $2.5 million as revenue replacement, primarily for kind of internal city uses. $415,000 was allocated for the contract with RPC for administration of these funds, and that left about $10 million available for the application process that y'all set out. So based on that, RPC staff worked with city staff to create the concept plan for these $10 million in funds in summer of 2022, and that was adopted by council. We developed the application process and solicited those applications in fall of 2022, and then based on that process, y'all selected 25 projects for funding allocations, and they began receiving funds in spring of 2023. So based on that, those 25 projects currently, so overall, there were about $9.95 million that were allocated as part of that process to these, those 25 projects. To date, those projects have spent about $5.9 million, so about 60% of the, those overall funds that were allocated. Based on project schedules and the timelines that they set out, they were scheduled to spend about $6 million at this point, so basically, overall, the projects are very close to on schedule, about 96% on schedule. Currently, the projects of those 25, there are 19 active projects, five complete projects, one project that was discontinued, and the median project status is about 50 to 75% complete, so most of these projects are pretty. complete. So most of these projects are pretty well underway and at work on what they set out to do. So far, looking at kind of results that have happened already, we have information for 3,970 households that have served, that have been served by these funds. Some of this includes duplicates across quarters, just because of the way that we have the data currently. But even so, that's still significant numbers of households that have been served so far, as well as seven businesses that have been served. Currently, dividing the overall allocation by that nearly 4,000 households served results in about $1,483 spent per household served. We do have a note there that a lot of these funds were kind of upfront capital investments that either haven't really been able to serve anyone yet or are just getting started. And then even some of the service projects, maybe it might have taken a little time getting underway and getting kind of getting going. So that number spent per households is going to decrease significantly when, for example, the Health and Wellness Center is actually serving households, and that $2 million they all spent on that is actually going towards households. So that number will kind of go down significantly in the coming years as projects are able to serve more households. I won't get into all the details on this slide, but this is just breaking down the kind of status of all the funds and households served by the eight priority areas that y'all have set out. We'll kind of, when we look at the individual projects, we'll talk through how they address those individual priority areas. But this is just kind of for your reference on how the results so far line up across those priority areas. So with that, I will get started on the individual project summaries. Just to kind of talk you through what we're going to talk through in this section, for each project, we're going to look at the city council ARPA goal that y'all set out, that this project met, just a brief project description as a reminder of what the project was, looking at the funding that was allocated and how much has been spent so far, as well as the project status, and then kind of looking at highlights of results so far. So I have kind of the six areas that were covered in the annual reports here. So how they met their goals and objectives, how they've addressed your eight goals, how they've addressed unmet needs that wouldn't have been met without Urbana ARPA funds, long-term impacts of the funds, lessons learned from the project, as well as kind of their long-term continuity plan. The slides that are in your packets address all six of those. For the purposes of these slides, just to try to cut some stuff down, we kind of, I kind of picked and chose bullet points that were the most relevant, so usually looking at like three or so of these. And just as a reminder, before we get into all of these individually, these are the 25 projects that we'll be talking about. The list that they're in is the kind of project ID number administrative list that we've been using internally. So before you try to figure out what the logic is here, nothing coherent. So it's just kind of what they're, based on what their project numbers have been. So with that, I will go ahead and dive into the individual projects and start with Eastern Illinois Food Bank, and the project was electric cargo vans and charging station. One thing, when we dive in, before we dive in, in the annual report, there was a place for like optional attachments, so PDFs, images, whatever. So some projects will have photos if they submitted anything, a bunch won't because they didn't submit that. That doesn't say anything about the project, but it's just if we had graphics available for that project. So for Eastern Illinois Food Bank, the ARPA goal, the city of Urbana ARPA goal that this project sought to meet was increasing availability and affordability of food. It sought to do this through purchasing an electric van and charger for use by the food bank. This project was allocated $79,000, all of which had been spent, and it is complete from the city's perspective. With this van, they have, with your funds, they have proceeded to purchase the van and charging station. Thus far, they've been able to do 72 deliveries of food to seniors, as well as 108 food donation pickups totaling more than 15,000 pounds of food that they've been able to pick up with the cargo van. Looking at how this addressed, how this addressed needs that wouldn't have been met without Urbana ARPA funds, the food bank didn't have really a vehicle that was efficient enough to effectively serve this role, as well to, as well, serving this role for pickup or kind of meeting the needs for locations that it needed to go. Looking at long-term impacts of this project, the food bank acquired an asset that enhances its flexibility, getting food to local neighborhoods or picking up food, and it enhanced their ability to serve neighbors in historically underserved communities and pick up food from previously inaccessible locations. I know in their report, they mentioned they've been able to get donations from the Campus Town Target that I think with their previous vehicles, just getting onto Green Street and getting pickups there was difficult. But with this new cargo van, they've been able to do that and do it efficiently because of the electronic van. So with that, I will keep plugging along to the next project, Solagrotia Farms Community Farm Expansion. This was another project that looked to increase availability and affordability of food in the community through funding construction of new farm infrastructure for Solagrotia Farm that provides a significant amount of donated food to community stakeholders. This project was allocated $150,000, all of which have been spent, and it is between half and three-quarters complete because Urbana ARPA funds were funding part of the construction, and the construction is ongoing. Looking at how Urbana ARPA funds were used, these funds supported architectural and engineering services, site prep, building construction, and water infrastructure for the site. These funds have addressed unmet needs through kind of moving forward this construction project and providing funds to get this moving forward so that staff can focus on their purpose of food production and distribution and not having to focus on additional fundraising for their farm expansion. Looking at long-term impacts, this is another one, capital investment. The new facilities will allow the farm to serve our community for decades to come. And Urbana funds allowed for an investment at the scope of level and level to increase production, processing, distribution, training, really across the whole gamut of services that Solagrotia provides. Looking long-term, like I mentioned, they've expended all of the Urbana ARPA funds, and are currently, they have a facility where the outside walls have been built, but at the time of the annual report, they were looking at an internal fit of that facility. They've received additional donations and grants, as well as a recent loan to complete the project entirely, and the building component should be complete by early October. Next project is the Urbana School District's Alternative Education Center. This project looked to meet several city goals, including improving accessibility of youth programming, addressing community violence, increasing availability of mental health services, providing job training, and investing in community infrastructure. It did this through supporting the renovation of the Alternative Education Center facility, as well as supporting staffing at that center. This project was allocated a little more than $800,000, of which nearly $600,000 have been spent so far, and the project is between half and three-quarters complete. Looking at some of the impacts, you'll see in your packet, the school district provided a lot of quantifiable stuff, so I chose a few for the presentation slides, but they've had 34 daytime program participants and 56 after-school participants, three students who participated, behaved in these programs, who've gone on to graduate high school and complete all of their program goals, and 64% of participants have seen improvements in their GPA as part of the programming. Looking at how this, how Urbana ARPA funds address unmet needs, the low staff-to-student ratio at the center has really been able to provide a benefit to the students served that wouldn't be possible without the assistance of outside funding to assist with this center. Looking long-term, the investment in building renovations will continue to be useful for years and decades to come, and investment in staff professional development has allowed for capacity building at the school district so that they can continue to serve, to serve students with those staff. The next project is the University YMCA New American Welcome Center's COVID-19 Recovery for Immigrant Communities. This project looked to reduce housing costs for those that need it most, and it did this through rent and utility assistance, as well as supportive services for the low-income immigrant community. This project was allocated $450,000, of which $131,000 has been spent and is between a quarter and half-complete. This project has served 63 clients directly through providing rent and utility assistance, and has conducted 250-plus eligibility screenings and referred an additional 150 clients to other programs. I think they're really trying to look to serve Urbana resident, low-income immigrant households through this program. So they've been able to direct other, meet that specific need and direct other clients who might not meet all of those qualifications to other programs. Looking at How Your Money: Addressed Unmet Needs, this project addressed the difficulty that immigrants have in accessing existing social support service systems, whether through language barriers, whether through discomfort sharing, personal identification, or personal information with government services. So really, reaching out to these communities and addressing that need, reaching some of the hardest-hit households in the pandemic, and kind of building trust within immigrant communities. Looking long-term, this project has allowed for capacity building within the New American Welcome Center and the Refugee Center, which is their, like, subrecipient that they're working with for this project. They've been able to build up their culturally and linguistically specific case management services, build up connections with other organizations, and distribute $95,000 in housing assistance to kind of keep residents in their homes and prevent the instability and kind of cascading effect that losing home provides to households. Next project is Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office Bridge to Home Program. This was another one that looks to address housing costs and meet that need through building renovations to the township's emergency shelter facilities, as well as funds for direct housing support for households. This project was allocated $658,000, of which $321,000 have been spent, so the project is between half and three-quarters complete. So far, the township has been able to move forward with the emergency shelter facility improvements that included a variety of security, energy efficiency, and safety improvements at the emergency shelter that you can see here. Those facilities have been able to serve 43 households in this time, and then the rental assistance portion has been able to serve 151 households. Looking at addressing unmet needs, the rental assistance program costs for the township significantly increased post-pandemic. So Urbana ARPA funds allowed for the township to increase the capacity of their services in response to this increased need, and also allowed for the township to provide funding in the forms that households needed. So whether it was just one month of emergency assistance, whether it was several months of assistance, whether it was move-in assistance, so down payment assistance, really allowing the funding to take the format that was needed for that household. The emergency shelter units also provided a place for high-need households to gain stability, and building improvements at these sites allowed them to be high-quality emergency housing and to allow for sustainability of operations long-term. Looking at long-term impacts, like I said, emergency shelter improvements allowed for better efficiency and safety and durability. Housing stability interventions allowed for intervention and preventing some of the from being on the street because they've lost housing. And the township noted that these funds have assisted the township and other local organizations in approaching the goal of functional zero homelessness, so having resources and facilities for anyone who is in that circumstance in the community. The next project is the Well Experience and their Well Family Care Program. This project looks to improve accessibility of youth programming in the community, address community violence, as well as providing mental health services through a variety of programming that the Well Experience provides, including mental health treatment, crisis management, wraparound support, and recreational programming for families and youth. This project was allocated $160,000, of which $140,000 have been spent, making it between three-quarters and fully complete. Through this funding, they've been able to serve 913 households across five quarters, including some duplicates. They've provided interventions to prevent 50 youth from becoming homeless, and have been able to increase their youth programming with both after-school and summer program, summer programming and the mental health services associated with that. That enrollment increased 50% in the period of the ARPA funding. This project, like I said, has provided after-school and summer programming for youth, provided mental health support to the variety of youth and households that the Well Experience interacts with, and as well as kind of providing targeted outreach to at-risk youth, as well as kind of all-encompassing assistance for households that reach out to the Well Experience. Looking at kind of unmet needs, the Urbana ARPA funds allowed for existing Well Experience programming to be increased to support the needs of all these families in the community in a way that there would not be the capacity to provide these services without Urbana ARPA funds. The next project is from Channing Murray Foundation, specifically the Red Herring Vegetarian Restaurant and their Handmade Harvest Program. This project looks to increase availability and affordability of food in the community through providing ready-to-eat meals at the existing food pantry and free food distribution events that Red Herring held. This project was allocated $10,000, all of which have been spent, and the project is fully complete from the city's perspective. With these funds, they were able to distribute over 1,000 meals to individuals facing food scarcity. And looking at how this project addressed unmet needs, this, like I said, this project allowed for ready-to-eat pre-made meals to be provided during kind of food distribution events. These ready-to-eat meals provided a way to introduce market clients to ways to use the staples that they were getting on a weekly basis from the market, and enhanced the capacity of Red Herring to engage with clients and community members. Looking long-term, this project allowed Red Herring to strengthen the relationships that it had with other nonprofits and organizations. It increased the demand for healthier food choices from clients as they saw kind of the dishes that could be made with the ingredients that were being provided, and allowed for Red Herring to increase public awareness and support for its efforts. The next project is Urbana Park District and their Park District Health and Wellness Center. This project looks to address several different goals, including increasing accessibility to public recreation space, increasing support for community violence interventions, as well as investments in community infrastructure. It did this through construction of the new Health and Wellness Center in Urbana. This project was allocated $2 million, all of which have been spent. And again, this is a larger construction project that's still in progress, almost done, so it's between 75 and fully, 75% and fully complete. Like I said, the facility is nearing substantial completion. At the time when they filled out the annual report, they said soft opening anticipated for this month, full programming beginning in January. I don't know if that's exactly the current schedule, but that was at the time of the annual report, that's what they reported. And as part of this process, they were also able to secure funds for 225 full-ride scholarships for Urbana residents to use the facility, and those were 225 year-long scholarships across the next five years. So looking at unmet needs, the Urbana ARPA funds allowed for the Park District to move forward with the scope of this project and reduce the need to either reduce the project scope, reduce scholarships, or increase visitation fees to make the construction process pencil out. Looking long-term, this is a capital asset, a building that will be operated and maintained as a public facility for years and decades to come, and will allow the Urbana Park District to serve our community in that way. Next project is City of Champaign Township and their Strides Low Barrier Shelter. Next project is City of Champagne Township and their Strides Low Barrier Shelter. This project looks to reduce housing costs, as well as increasing availability of mental health services to shelter clients, as well as investing in community infrastructure. It did this through providing staffing support to the Strides Low Barrier Homeless Shelter. This project was funded at $750,000, all of which have been spent, and the city's component of this project is fully complete. So this project served strides through supporting staffing for 30 full-time employees for the grant-funded period. During this period, the shelter was able to operate at full capacity, serving 620 individuals during this time, with an average day among those individuals of 111 days at the facility. Looking at how it addressed funding goals, clients were provided overnight shelter, as well as a variety of other services, including a daily meal, access to shower and laundry services, case management, and onsite health checkup and benefits enrollment. Looking at how the city stepped up to meet unmet needs, ARPA funds allowed for full staffing and shelter capacity that would not have been possible otherwise without these funds. And looking long-term, providing staffing capacity during this period provided the shelter with the opportunity to pursue other long-term funding opportunities, so they were also able to secure Champagne ARPA funds, as well as receiving funds from state health services. So Urbana funds met staffing needs at a time that bought them time to seek out other funding Next project is the Urbana Champagne Independent Media Center's Access IMC Project, which looks to increase the accessibility of public recreation space and youth programming in the community. It looks to do this through providing building improvements in the IMC's community meeting spaces. This project received $75,000, of which $14,000 have been spent, and it is less than 25% complete at this point, and we'll talk in a second about part of the reason for that. So thus far, IMC has been able to invest in some of the building improvements that were planned, including a north ramp entrance to the facility, as well as meeting cameras to improve their meeting space facilities. Since securing ARPA funds, the IMC has also secured a grant that's specifically focused on facilities planning, so they're currently doing a more in-depth facilities planning process with that grant, with the plan that ARPA funds will go towards some of the investments that are more clearly planned out during that process. And as part of receiving this other grant, they've also shifted some costs to serve personnel for a program manager position to better improve usage of their space. Looking at unmet needs, the IMC's space fills a gap in downtown Urbana for meeting space, especially for events that, for one reason or another, might not be feasible at the library, whether it's the hours that the meeting happens, or they're not in compliance with library rules about food, selling goods, needing closed access to the meeting. So really, serving a meeting space in downtown for instances where the library is not able to do that. The IMC is able to subsidize or provide freer, low-cost meeting space in a way that other locations or venues are not able to. And the investments as part of this project are improving their meeting space, as well as increasing community awareness of the availability of these spaces. Looking long-term, the existing ramp entrance has allowed for long-term building accessibility improvements, including some of the tenants in the facility that have never had accessible access, so really increasing the availability of who is able to go throughout the building. And looking long-term, like I said, they're continuing to develop a facilities plan with outside funding, and then future ARPA facilities investments will be informed by that planning process, as well as developing continuity costs for staff expenses beyond the scope of the ARPA grant. Next project is an internal city project with the Community Development Department, their Roof Repair and Replacement Program. So this was a project that looked to reduce housing costs for those that need it most through providing roof repair and replacement to low-income households. $150,000 were allocated to this project, of which $32,000 have been spent so far, making the project between a quarter and half-complete. Thus far, at the time of the annual report, four roof repairs have been completed, and two were in progress. Looking at unmet needs, staff mentioned that generally, existing federal funding sources don't really provide the funding for kind of large-scale household improvements like roof repair, and that's part of the reason why before this program, there was no roof repair program in our community and the entire county. So these kind of more open-ended funds allowed for them to meet that specific need that's not provided through other HUD grant programs. Looking long-term, this program is improving the conditions and lifespan of homes for low-income homeowners, so reducing their housing costs, and improving overall community housing stock and neighborhood stability through kind of improving these houses. Looking at lessons learned, the program, like I mentioned, it's between 25% and 50% complete right now. It has had fewer applicants than staff initially expected, so staff is working on increasing outreach and improving take-up of this project so that they can continue to spend all these funds in the next two years of the ARPA program funding eligibility. Next project is the Housing Authority's Youth Build Program, which they called Youth Build: Bridging the Gap for the Urbana-funded component. This project is looking to meet several goals, including providing youth programming, community violence interventions, and job training opportunities. It's doing this through Youth Build, which is a pre-apprenticeship program to provide high school diploma, vocational training, and supportive services to students where the traditional high school experience has not been feasible for them, for whatever reason. This project was allocated $350,000, of which $280,000 have been spent so far, and this project is between half and three-quarters complete. Through the Urbana-funded component of Youth Build, which is really focused on Urbana-focused outreach, having facilities in Urbana to educate students, they've had 20 participants, and of those 20 have had 14 increase reading scores, 14 receive high school diplomas, as well as 15 receiving career certifications through the program. Through this, looking long-term, students have been able to gain experience and certifications to set them up for long-term employment success, and students have also been able to do kind of construction work, their learning work on local infrastructures, have been able to use their kind of learning time to make these construction investments in community infrastructure. Looking at needs that were met by these funds, Urbana ARPA funds allowed for the expansion of the Youth Build Program to engage with and serve more students, specifically focused in Urbana, improve Youth Build facilities, and invest in capacity building for the program. Looking kind of long-term continuity, the ARPA project has allowed for the Youth Build to kind of develop better internal project management documentation, really build up their capacity building internally, and as well as their sustainability plan, has allowed for increased relationships with other local partners, and they are currently pursuing grant funds to be able to increase, or to be able to continue the program at the level that they are currently offering it after ARPA funds have expired, or after they've spent all of their ARPA funds. Next project is Habitat for Humanity of Champagne County and their First-Time Homeownership So this is another project looking to reduce housing costs for local residents. It is doing this through increasing the capacity of the existing Habitat Free Homeowner Education Programs that are provided for first-time low-income homeowners. This project was provided $25,000, all of which have been spent, and from the city's perspective, this project is fully complete. In the time that this project was operating, they hosted three affordable homeownership workshops, serving 16 Urbana households. They provided two sessions of pre- and post-home purchase education, serving 11 Urbana households, and assisted four households in purchasing homes in Urbana through their one-on-one housing counseling. In total, 22 Urbana residents completed their one-on-one housing counseling. Looking at addressing unmet needs, Habitat is the only local agency that's certified to provide this homeownership education program in the community, and Urbana ARPA funds allowed them to increase the capacity of this service, to serve more households, specifically Urbana households, and provide their one-on-one services for low-income first-time homeowners. Based on the pilot, Habitat was really happy with the ability to increase the services and is pursuing other funding sources to be able to continue to provide the program at the scale that they were able to with Urbana ARPA funds. Next project is Champagne County Environmental Stewards and their Household Hazardous Waste Collection Facility. This project looks to invest in community infrastructure, and specifically, the establishment of a household hazardous waste collection facility in Champagne County. This project was allocated $175,000, all of which have been spent, but this is another one where it's a large-scale construction project, so the full project is still ongoing, between a quarter and halfway done, even though Urbana funds have been fully spent at this point. So looking at impacts, Urbana ARPA funds were used to support the purchase of land for the facility. These funds are really addressing the funding goals of building up community infrastructure, improving community health, safety, and resilience through getting these hazardous materials out of houses and into a facility where they can be disposed of properly. Looking at addressing unmet needs, Urbana ARPA funds allowed the organization to step in and purchase the property when it was available, and really jump on a property that was well-located for residents, workers, and contractors who will be using the facility once it is up and running. And looking long-term continuity, the organization is currently conducting a capital campaign to fully fund the facility construction, and is seeking agreements with local governments and stakeholders to help fund this operation. Once the building is up and running, they will leverage annual support from Illinois EPA to do kind of the ongoing operations of this facility. Next project, Carl Hospital's Hope Village Project. This project looks to reduce housing costs for those who need it most, increase the availability and affordability of mental health services, as well as investing in community infrastructure. It looks to do this through constructing tiny home village for chronic and medically fragile homeless individuals in Urbana. This project was allocated $850,000, $100,000, and $600,000 have been spent at this point, and the project is between half and three-quarters complete. Looking at what's been accomplished so far, Urbana ARPA funds have supported initial construction costs, including site infrastructure and the building of the community center in the middle of the facility, and have allowed Carl to leverage other funds to support the other costs associated with construction. Looking at addressing unmet needs, this kind of focused service on supportive housing for homeless and medically fragile individuals is a gap in current community infrastructure, so once it's up and running, this facility will really meet those needs. Looking specifically at Urbana ARPA funds, the city was able to step in and provide work for initial construction, as well as providing a step for Carl to leverage other funds to continue to move the project forward. And looking long-term, the construction funds from the Urbana allocation have been fully expended, and the project will resume construction with other funds in 2025, after the funding award process for other grants is complete. Carl did set aside the remaining, I believe it's $250,000, from the Urbana ARPA allocation for operating funds, staffing costs, so once the project is up and running, they will spend down those remaining Urbana ARPA funds to support the residents of the completed Next project is another internal city project, this time through Public Works, and their Sanitary Sewer Lateral Linings Pilot Program. This program is looking to invest in community infrastructure through conducting sewer lateral lining for homes in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. This project was allocated about $1.3 million, of which $216,000 have been spent so far, making it less than a quarter-complete currently. So far, Public Works was able to recruit 116 out of the 144 eligible properties to participate in this program, which I believe, from their annual report, was a pretty unprecedented level of recruitment from their experience. With those 116 households, laterals have been inspected on all of those participating properties. Three emergency spot repairs have been conducted for properties that had kind of emergency, immediate needs, and review of all of these inspection videos has begun to kind of build out the strategy for doing kind of the entire improvement process. Looking at addressing unmet needs, looking at kind of the existing budget that Public Works has for this kind of work, this allowed for kind of proactive intervention to improve the sewer laterals that wouldn't be possible otherwise. They said, under their normal budget, this kind of work would take 25 years to do, and they're doing it in the Dr. Ellis subdivision in just a few years, so this allowed for kind of proactive improvements that would not be possible otherwise. Looking long-term, this work will ensure reliable laterals for these properties for another 50 to 100 years, really improving community infrastructure and reducing costs to the homeowners of these properties, and will also, as a pilot project, will inform other work that the Public Works does throughout the community, so they've been able, I think, already, and will continue to learn from this process, and better inform their ongoing sewer improvement projects around the community. The next project is another school district project, and this is their student, family, and community engagement sponsorship. This project looks to increase youth programming and community violence interventions through staffing costs to integrate the Self-Made Kings Program into the school district's existing programming, so really integrating it into the district from being an outside program. This project was allocated $143,000, of which $100,000 have been spent thus far, and it is between half and three-quarters complete. So far, this project has been able to serve 66 students and provided 146 hours of structured program activity. It's seen positive improvements in anger management and conflict resolution, as well as in school performance, and allowed for significant hours of outreach in the community. Looking at unmet needs, this staff position that was funded through Urbana ARPA funds allowed for the creation of this programming, targeted programming within the school district that wouldn't exist otherwise, and the staffing hours allowed to help administer these programs, as well as to build community partnerships. Looking at long-term impacts, that partnership building and staff capacity building has allowed for kind of the long-term sustainability of this project. Next project is First Followers and their Urbana Community Peace Hub, which looks to address several funding goals, including violence interventions, mental health services, as well as job training, through community-based reentry services for justice-involved individuals, and particularly with women impacted by incarceration. This project was funded at about $79,000, of which $60,000 have been spent, and is between three-quarters and fully complete. So far, First Followers has been able to serve 90 households with household assistance through this program, as well as providing 11 outreach events with 80 attendees. Looking at addressing funding goals, they've been able to provide housing assistance, anti-violence programming for young people, mental health and well-being workshops, as well as resume development events to build employment skills. Looking at addressing unmet needs, they've been able to provide targeted support for justice-involved individuals and households, and like I said, especially for women involved in the justice system. And looking long-term, the ARPA-funded period has allowed for capacity building at First Followers, as well as kind of stakeholder engagement and Followers, as well as kind of stakeholder engagement and engagement with other community organizations. And they will continue to pursue alternate funding sources to be able to continue to provide the services that they've been able to do with Urbana ARPA funds. Next project is Common Ground Food Co-op and their Food For All Accessibility Program. This project looks to increase availability and affordability of food through providing discounted groceries and free co-op memberships for low-income households. This project was allocated $10,000, all of which have been spent, and it is fully complete from the city's perspective. Looking at objectives and outcomes, Urbana ARPA funds allowed for 278 new Food For All members and $10,000 worth of discounts to be able to be provided to these members. Looking at addressing unmet needs, in response to increased food costs in light of the pandemic, ARPA funds allowed for Common Ground to be able to continue to provide their Food For All discounts and memberships and kind of make sure that that program continued to be feasible. Looking long-term, food for all members will continue to have the benefits of co-op membership. One thing that kind of changed over the course of this project is the state started to provide what I believe is called the Link Match Program, which is basically vouchers for local fresh produce. So a lot of the households that would use Food For All instead were able to take advantage of Link Match. Because of that, Common Ground spent down the Food For All Urbana ARPA funds slower than they anticipated, because if they were using a voucher, there wasn't really a discount to be provided. But the good news about that was that slower spending timeline allowed for the co-op to build up a reserve for kind of long-term program continuity, and really for the program to be able to continue to be feasible with their existing grants and funding sources now that the Urbana ARPA funds have all been spent out. Next project is Justine Peterson's Small Business Micro Loan Fund, which, if you remember, all the way back to the application process, I believe this was presented in part with the Local Economic Development District. This project looks to provide relief and support for our local businesses through providing low-interest loans to small businesses in Urbana. This project was allocated $250,000, of which a little less than $4,000 have been spent so far, making it less than 25% complete at this point, which we'll talk about a little bit more in a second. So far, this project has been able to originate more than $30,000 in loans to six Urbana small businesses, including businesses owned by some focus groups, including half non-white borrowers, half low-income borrowers, and one borrower, which was a business owner who's a disabled veteran. Looking at addressing unmet needs, the kind of local business funds available at reduced interest rates were only really feasible through the provision of Urbana ARPA funds. And looking at continuity, loan funds will continue to revolve in Urbana as loans are sent out and then repaid. In terms of kind of engagement in this program, I think this is another one where application and recruitment has been slower than anticipated, but Justine Peterson's staff is working with local staff to develop a better engagement and recruitment strategies, and fully anticipates still spending their full allocation before the program expires, but is working on kind of new recruitment strategies at the moment. Next project is the Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center and their project Operation UNCC Boost. This project looks to improve accessibility of youth programming in the community through allowing UNCC to purchase a new van and signage for the van, as well as making fire sprinkler improvements to their facility. This project was allocated $100,000, of which $55,000 have been spent, and it's between half and three-quarters done. Looking at outcomes so far, as you saw from the photo on the previous slide, UNCC was able to purchase a new-to-them passenger van and paint it with their logo information for recognizability. This has allowed them to continue to provide youth programming and increase their capacity through having a reliable vehicle to transfer students from school to their after-school program, as well as on field trips, and has allowed for better advertising of the center and its services. Looking at what your funds have done to address unmet needs, they've allowed for the use of the new vehicle, like I said, enabling timely after-school pickup, timely and reliable through vehicle availability, as well as alleviating the concerns that they had with their previous vehicle. And looking long-term, it's another one where they've made a capital investment. They have this vehicle that they'll be able to use for years to come on a reliable basis to serve their programming. And this summer, this vehicle helped to contribute to them having their highest-ever summer program enrollment, so really being able to engage area youth in their programming. Next project is Champaign County Healthcare Consumers Special Populations Outreach and This project looks to address several goals, including reducing housing costs, increasing mental health service availability, and reducing food costs. It did this through providing community health workers to help with benefits enrollment for three kind of targeted communities: low-income seniors, disabled individuals who aren't already enrolled in programs for disabled individuals, as well as low-income immigrants. This project was allocated $500,000, of which $121,000 have been spent, and it's between a quarter and halfway done. I believe that this project, their original schedule had this project paying for staff costs basically through 2026, so even though they're not super far down the road, they're on schedule with their original plan. So far, this program has been able to serve 392 households, and you can see how that breaks down within their three kind of target groups. They've been able to enroll individuals in programs to provide housing costs, provide funding for housing costs, providing health and mental health enrollment, as well as help accessing food. Looking at addressing unmet needs, the programs, the federal programs that they're helping individuals enroll in are under-enrolled. Everyone who is eligible is not enrolled, either due to lack of knowledge or difficulty applying to these programs. So ARPA funding has provided staff who are experts on these programs that can really walk people through the process and get them the resources that they are eligible and should be receiving. Looking at continuity, like I said, the organization plans to continue with ARPA funds through 2026, and after that, to use their detailed data on the positive outcomes of this program to apply for other funding sources to continue to provide these services. I think we have three more, so we're getting close. Next project is another housing authority project for steer place renovation. This is another project looking to reduce housing costs through the rehabilitation of a 50-year-old affordable senior housing facility in Urbana. At the time of the annual report, they had been allocated $500,000 and hadn't spent any of it yet, although I believe, yep, they anticipated to start the project in this last quarter, so should hopefully have positive updates soon on this project. Next project is the Urbana Free Library and their Community Connections Youth Programming This project looks to improve the accessibility of public recreation space and youth programming, and it is doing this by funding a full-time bilingual programming specialist at the library who will focus on youth programming and community outreach. This project was allocated $173,000, of which $22,000 have been spent. It's less than 25% complete, but it's another one where they scheduled for staffing costs all the way through the next two years, so they're on schedule with their original plan. So far, they've been able to hire this staff role, and the staff member has been able to host or assist with 37 different events, including 24 programs and 13 outreach events serving thousands of attendees, and within these, providing 12 bilingual events. Looking at addressing unmet needs, the staff position wouldn't have been funded without Urbana ARPA funds, and this staff member really is allowing for increase in the number and types of programming provided through the library, and increasing the amount of community outreach events and partnerships that they're able to create. Looking long-term, like I said, they're increasing the library's engagement with other community organizations, as well as populations in the community who might not have previously felt comfortable or served by the library services, so really looking to expand who is best served by the library. And the last project is the one that I mentioned that got canceled, another housing authority project, this one, a single-room occupancy affordable housing project. This one was looking to reduce housing costs through providing a single-room occupancy facility for housing insecure individuals and families. It was allocated $200,000, but was ultimately canceled because the project partners for this project determined not to move forward with the single-room occupancy project model. I believe they were working with several stakeholders in the community that decided not to move forward with this housing model, so ARPA funds will not be used for this project and will be reallocated, returned to the pot and reallocated. So, got through all of those. Last section is takeaways, so again, looking at kind of broad strokes, and then I will open it up. I'm going to take a drink of water first. Okay. So, overall takeaways, starting first, was kind of program success. One thing that Will and I noted, you might remember during the allocation process that y'all engaged with, a lot of the recipients didn't receive their full asking amount, just as y'all were looking to fund as many projects as you could. But we found that sub-receptors were able to adapt to that partial funding level and still provide kind of fully fleshed-out projects, even if at a smaller scale. Like I mentioned, projects are generally on schedule. We have done some minor just administrative timeline changes for their kind of quarterly schedule, but in general, projects are on schedule, and we anticipate all the projects moving forward and wrapping up by the end of 2026 when the ARPA program expires. In addition, the contracts that sub-receptors have entered into with the city have allowed for flexibility for the recipients to provide services in the way that they need to, while also maintaining the scopes of their projects that they have promised to provide. Looking at some highlights, I did break this down by the eight kind of priority categories that y'all highlighted that you wanted to serve. So kind of looking, this is all kind of taken from the data that I already went through, but I won't go through this one in detail, but you have been able to provide services across all of these priority areas through the variety of projects that you've been able to fund. Looking at future success, like I mentioned, there have been a bunch of long-term assets that have been invested in through ARPA funds. So these projects will provide community benefits for years and decades, long after the ARPA program is done, whether it's through building investments like the Health and Wellness Center, or vehicle investments, or infrastructure investments like sewer hazardous waste. These are projects that are investing in tangible equipment, facilities, that will continue to serve our community after the ARPA program is done. In addition, even when there haven't been kind of investments in hard infrastructure, ARPA funds have provided the foundation for long-term benefits to individuals and organizations, whether that's providing early intervention to at-risk youth, to kind of provide them on a better path, providing housing assistance to keep people from being kicked out of their home and all of the instability that results from that, like I said, stepping in for the low-barrier shelter to meet their funding needs at an important time. And other ways, the ARPA funds have also allowed for both individuals and organizations to meet needs right now that will continue to show benefits in the future. Looking at some just kind of Will and I sub-recipient management takeaways, consistent and continual oversight and coordination has been needed, as well as clear and repeated communication to maintain compliance, so following up, saying, hey, just a reminder, this is when your quarterly report is due. Hello, quarterly reports are open. Hello, quarterly reports are due in five days. Hello, where's your quarterly report? And following up, following up if there's anything in those that need to be followed up on. We've found internal dynamics at the sub-receptors have contributed to this need for continual communication, so whether it's the staff member that came and presented to y'all and helped get the contract signed is no longer there, or they engaged early in the process and then handed it over to a staff member, and that staff member has never seen the contract itself, making sure that everyone is aware of what the expectations are and able to continue to perform their obligations. And we have found varying degrees within the projects that we've seen of sub-recipient experience and capacity to perform program administration on their end. Just kind of looking at my work for y'all, it's been about 70 hours a month of ARPA administration over the last year. Some of that has been just kind of general overall administration, but kind of taking out some time for that. That's averaged about seven and a half hours of my time per project, per quarter. And that has, there definitely have been some projects that have been more of that time and some have been less. Some of that has been needing to address missing or incorrect reporting, addressing, saying, hey, this expense, I'm not sure that this complies with your agreement, revising contracts, like we said, revising contracts due to changes in scope or changes in timeline. And a lot of this was correlated with agency size, so I know one thing that y'all really wanted to accomplish with this fund was increasing who was able to receive grant funding, and I think y'all have done a really great job of doing that. And this has just been the kind of trade-off with that, is some of these organizations do require more assistance to make sure everything is going along as it needs to. Couple conclusions about the ARPA program generally. ARPA was kind of unique. Hopefully, we don't have a global pandemic and all of that again, but so some of these are kind of specific to the ARPA program, but could be useful takeaways for the future. But the flexible funds that the feds provided, like I mentioned, have allowed sub-receptors to meet a large variety of service needs and gaps in the community that might not have been served within existing rules of existing programs. And I really think Urbana's process of prioritizing figuring out what your priorities are and figuring out a process for project selection have been successful in enabling long-term impacts with these funds. So I think that's it. So I can turn it over to questions. I know there's other stuff on your agenda, and I know Will intended this to be kind of a kickoff for other ARPA conversations that will happen over the next couple months, so I'm happy to take questions, happy to take y'all's lead.
Okay, let's take some short time at least for questions. James?
Thank you for that extensive report. It's good to see most of the things are on track, working as expected. The important thing that I saw go by in my mind is $200,000 that we need to reallocate by the end of 2024, which seems very soon, given how long it took us to allocate these funds originally. So I'm curious what the plan for that is.
Do you want me to defer to you, Will?
We have a discussion item on next week's agenda to talk about what we want that plan to be.
Thank you.
How much, remind us, how much time do the projects have to spend the money?
All funding must be spent by the end of 2026, so they have two and a quarter years at this point to get it all spent.
Anyone else with questions? Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for that report. That was extremely thorough and I really appreciate that because you answered almost every question I would have had in the report.
And you guys got the short version, too.
If you want more info, you can see your packets, but yes.
Thank you very much.
If there are specific projects, specific questions, you can send those to Will and he can send them to me. And I can, happy to follow up with anything that y'all didn't want to ask about now so we can move your meeting forward. Yeah, happy to answer anything else that comes up.
Okey dokey. Everybody's taking care of moving on then, old business.
Oh, I have one.
One announcement.
Just an update, the partial special census underway in Urbana has moved on to the in-person, door-to-door visits by the field representatives. The opportunities for online participation closed at the end of last week and now anyone who didn't respond online will be getting a visit from a field representative over the next few weeks. So they're fully identified, they are carrying identifying materials, and they will be visiting each household in the census blocks we've identified.
Any more announcements before I move on to old business? Old business, okay. Resolution number 2024-08-058R, resolution approving standardized employment agreement templates for city appointees. And we have Michelle and Elizabeth.
So really, I'm just going to make a very brief statement because this is just ongoing discussion for you, but we did provide a revised version of the resolution as well as revised versions of both of the agreements that we believe reflect the changes that were directed by council. Other than that, we're really just here to listen to any direction and answer questions if you have any.
Anybody? Grace.
Thank you so much for the updates since our last COW meeting. I had two things that I think we already agreed upon last time that were maybe just not included this time around. And then I would later propose something else for council to consider, but those two things that I think we already talked about was, one, simple one, is section eight on indemnification, just adding the chapter number with the article, so chapter two, article nine, or whatever it is. And then in the resolution, I think what we had done a clear straw poll on was that this would apply to all full-time permanent positions. And it just says in full-time permanent positions, but not that word "all." I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in if that was their understanding or not of last COW, but I think those were two things that we'd already discussed that just couldn't make it in there. Now, hold off for now, but like I said, I have one new proposal to consider.
Sharice.
Mary Alice.
Do we need a motion to start the discussion on this, I think?
Yeah.
Unless...
So do I have a motion?
I'll move resolution number 2024-08-058R, resolution approving standardized employment agreement templates for the city appointees onto city council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mary Alice moved and James seconded. All in favor?
How about some discussion?
Got to do a voice, okay. Will the clerk call the roll?
Can we have discussion, please?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Thought I had to, go ahead. Discussion now. Grace.
Thank you. So, again, I appreciate that, I think most of the things that we've covered last COW were in there and updated. Severance, we had agreed to not be cumulative, kind of retroactively to current employees. And then what I would like to move an amendment for severance, starting at eight weeks, plus one week per year, up to 12 total.
What section are you talking about?
Severance is, I don't know. Does that, does somebody have it?
When you're talking about it, I thought you'd have it.
Slash, yeah, 12 on the other version. So section's 12 or 13, depending on what version you're looking at. If I may speak to my motion and see if there's a second, I think the...
I don't know what motion you made.
Oh, to amend the severance payment, so sections 12 or 13.
I didn't know that was a motion. I thought it was a question to Elizabeth and Michelle.
No, you just asked what section number, but I was trying to make a motion to amend.
Well, because I thought you were talking to them, asking them a question, I didn't know you were making a motion. So I don't know if they want, might want to answer you before there's a motion made.
There's no question, but I'm happy to hear first.
Elizabeth.
Just to point a clarification, the terms, the severance, specific severance terms are different in the two agreements. So I just want to make sure you're all aware of that.
Thank you. And could you clarify then? Because, yeah, I guess I've been looking at the eight weeks and then two weeks per year at a maximum of 16.
The department heads and city administrators accrue more quickly, at a more quick rate than the other appointees.
So the other version is one week per year, or?
So the, pardon me, while I flip back.
Because I guess I'm looking at the other one, I still see eight weeks.
Right, you see eight weeks, but then you see one additional week for each full year And I'm not saying that they can't be the same, but just pointing out that they're different already.
Okay, so you're saying the...
It's the last sentence of paragraph A under, what, section 13 in one contract and section 12 in the other contract. So in first section 13, employees shall receive an additional four weeks of severance upon separation with an additional two weeks of severance for each additional full year of service. And in the other contract, it's an additional one week of severance for each additional full year of service to a maximum of 16.
And so, sorry if I may understand, so they're both a base of eight weeks, starting out, right? And then one version is plus two weeks, plus one for every year.
One version is two weeks for every additional year and one version is one week. So you accrue more slowly, the severance, if you're in the, if you're dealing with a contract for other appointees.
Okay, and then the other one is two, four, plus two weeks per year after that. No more than 16 weeks total now. Thank you.
Go ahead, Grace.
So I would like to propose an amendment so that they are all eight weeks base severance with one additional week per year of service at a maximum of 12 weeks.
All right, that was a motion, okay.
Point of order, that was an amendment.
Yeah.
Motion to amend.
But a motion to amend.
Yes. And if I may speak to it, I think just the rationale for this is, you know, I do support the employees' rights and job security. I think that up to 12 weeks is quite a lot. I think 16 weeks of four months of the city paying someone's full salary after they've separated from the city is a bit much and especially in comparison to not having that for other employees. I understand the discrepancy of the at-will nature of this position, but I do think that starting at eight weeks, having two months of your base pay and then up to 12 weeks, I think is very reasonable, especially at these really high-level salary positions. This is a big ask on taxpayers to continue that, especially as we ask for at least 30 days of kind of being available in the transition. So I think that those things make sense and I think it would be responsible to the taxpayers and respectful of the average income and reality of the city of Urbana to have it a little more in line with that.
Does anyone else wish to discuss this particular? James.
So I will not vote for this amendment and I'll tell you why I won't. Because the added severance for the department head positions recognizes that a department head position is not a job search where you can turn around and find other employment right away in that senior position. And so I think that for a department head, coming to the city, bringing that expertise to run a full department for our citizens, for our community, there has to be an allowance, an understanding that if at some point we decide that's not working out or they need to go, that it's not going to be something where they turn around in a few weeks, maybe even a few months, and find a comparable position. So if we want to bring the best that we can to help run the city, to lead these departments, which are, you know, significant business operations, this is not like something that you decide you want to do, you know, the next day. We have to have some kind of recognition that there is some risk in coming to a position that has a limited commitment to it because of the process that we're doing. And we have to give them, you know, a path to find another place if that doesn't work out. And so I am comfortable with it the way it stands and so I will vote no against the amendment.
Mary Alice.
I believe I asked this question last time, but just to refresh, Champaign, what is their severance policy?
I believe there's a schedule where it builds up over time, but I believe the maximum is 20 weeks, which is what's allowed by state law.
It's 20 weeks. And so since we are in competition basically for recruitment for different people, I'm tending to agree with James that I think 16 weeks is more reasonable than 12 weeks. I understand the concern about the city paying extra. And I think one of the things that we talked about last time was that it takes quite a bit of time to recruit these people, new people. And we want to do everything that we can to make Urbana a desirable place to live and to work. So at the moment, I'm not going to vote for this amendment.
Mary Alice, will you take the...
I'll take the chair and the chair recognizes Sharice.
I'm just going to kind of agree with James and Mary Alice as well in that the thing that I want to real, want to state in particularly is, a lot of times we compare Urbana to Champaign and Urbana is not the population nor the tax base of Champaign on any level. We have 30% of our properties that are tax exempt. We have a huge rental population. We cannot compete with, we have, we will always have an issue, number one, competing for the cream of the crop. And we're going to have a problem, I think, with that just based on our size and the certain revenue that comes into the city. I don't want to put another, yet another burden. I think that for our size, we actually pay a good wage already. And when it comes to severance package, and I'm not sure, you know, what I don't understand, if I were to have a question, I'd be like, does that mean we let them go and under what circumstances did we let them go and so on and so forth? Because some people get good severance packages even though they brought that severance upon themselves. And so I want to say that I can't just flat out say that this would be a package that I would be comfortable with right now.
Would you like the chair back?
Yes, I would, thank you.
I'll relinquish the chair, thank you.
Any more questions? Oh, okay, Elizabeth.
Would you like us to clarify under what conditions somebody would receive severance pay?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, we'll let Michelle do that. I would refer you to the section that is right before the severance section in, so it's alternatively probably it's paragraph or section 12 in one contract and I would assume section 11 in the other. And that articulates four scenarios which would trigger the right to have severance pay under this contract. So one of those scenarios is in which the mayor exercises their right not to reappoint the employee or the council declines to reappoint an employee who's been put forth by the mayor. The legislature or the city and its residents amends any provision of the city code that diminishes the powers, duties, and authority of that employee's position. It substantially changes the terms of their employment and what they thought they were here to do and it changes their job essentially. The city reduces the salary compensation or benefits to that employee that is not commensurate with a reduction across the board to, like, if we were to decrease greatly the salary of one department head out of proportion with a general decrease to the salary of all other department heads. Or if the employee were offered, the city were to offer to the employee in a formal way the opportunity to resign. But another section does speak to the fact that under the severance section, then if you turn to paragraph E, that's an exception to the payment of severance and that's in two scenarios. One is if the mayor determines that it's in the best interest of the municipality for the mayor to exercise the right to remove that person from their appointed position during the term of their appointment or if they are separated for cause. So if they've done anything that is unethical, grossly negligent, willful, wanton, discriminatory or harassing. So in those scenarios, they would not be entitled to severance.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll regarding the amendment to section A, I mean, paragraph A in section 13?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
It's a tie.
But it's an amendment, so it's not passing, it's not final action. I don't know that the mayor is able to vote on that. It's not final action.
So it goes back to the way it is?
I believe it, it just fails, like it stalls in a tie.
Okey doke. Moving on then, anything else? Grace.
Thank you, I did have, I forgot a question about, now that we're back to the full motion. I appreciate what you added to the section about transition of duties and responsibilities. It's 14 or 13, maybe? I was wondering about the...
It's 14 or 13, maybe? I was wondering about this last part, the last sentence that says the city agrees to reimburse the employee for their time and travel and expenses in assisting the city in such matters. And I wasn't sure if that was related only to the part about litigation, or also, that kind of first part seems to talk about being available for phone calls or emails. Is that also what it's about, or is it referring specifically to, like, you get, you come into court?
It's the litigation piece, yes.
I don't know if we could clarify that, just if, the way I'm reading it now, someone could, I think, could interpret it as, well, he called me and sent these emails, and it says that we agreed to reimburse them.
Sorry. I could say something in their assistance to the city in such litigation matters. Add something in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, so we decided that the period of time was for 30 days to be available for questions.
I'm sorry, I had 30 in one and 90 in the other.
I think it's 90 in the department head agreement, it's 30 in the other agreement.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I have done a bad job reading both contracts. Apparently, I'm just reading one or the other.
Apparently, I did a bad job amending both contracts, so just let me know your preference.
And so is that, is that the intention for it to be 90 and 30, or to be 90 and both?
As I sit here and I think about it, I think I did intentionally make it 90 and 30, because I thought there were more responsibilities, and it was more reasonable to ask a department head and somebody who'd had that position to be available for longer, whereas some of the other appointed positions, I thought it was more reasonable to expect those abilities to be transitioned, and after a period of 30 days.
And then, is it just kind of standard, doesn't need to be spelled out here, of like, passing along all that information? Like, when someone leaves the city, like, I imagine that hopefully their work contents are on work devices and are already passed down, and there's a process for that, so someone doesn't just run off with all of their information?
That, to the best of my knowledge, historically, has not been a problem, right? We basically own the intellectual property you generate while you're on, you know, city time, being paid, and it's usually on city equipment and things like that. So I didn't want to get, I'm happy to get as, however specific as you want, I didn't want to get too weeded into the IT and the, you know, intellectual property transition pieces. But if there are areas that bear more specification, I'm happy to add language. I think, yeah, I was hoping that, yeah, there are some other systems in place, and that that's not an issue and is addressed otherwise.
Here, Marla.
Document retention requirements apply. So that covers a lot of your concerns.
Okay. The motion on the table is still for approval and move forward to city council. Are we talking about with certain amendments, the 90-30 thing, or that's already in there? Everything else is okay?
That's already in there, yeah. That was just clarifying.
Okay.
Wasn't any amended changes.
Are we ready to call the roll? Okay. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
No.
Ms. Wilken?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
So that passes on to city council. Next on the agenda, new business. Thank you, ladies. Okay, new business ordinance number 2024-10-032, and ordinance approving a major variance farmhouse floor area at 809 West Pennsylvania Avenue, case number ZBA 2024 MAJ 01. And we have Community Development, Marcus Ritchie.
Good evening, council.
Mm-hmm.
City council is being asked to approve a major variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 0.5 to 0.3 to allow the replacement of an exterior fire stair with an enclosed stair tower at 809 West Pennsylvania Avenue in the R7 University Residential Zoning District. The project would have no impact on city services, finances, or budget. The attached ZBA staff report and minutes of the September 18th, 2024 ZBA meeting contain additional background information and discussion. The project, the farmhouse fraternity, which is the occupant of the property, is located at the southeast corner of Lincoln and Pennsylvania Avenue. On September 18th, the ZBA voted unanimously to recommend that city council approve this major variance with one condition, that construction be in general conformance with the submitted site plan. Staff concur with this recommendation and request that council place the request on the consent agenda for the upcoming council meeting. That is my summary of the council staff report. I'm happy to answer questions or go over the ZBA staff report. Brant Muncaster, who is the applicant, is here to also answer any technical questions.
Are there any questions, James?
Yeah, thank you. I want to make it clear that I looked at this, and I understand what they're trying to do here. I think it's in the interest of public safety, but I do want to, for my own benefit, to understand the process better. I'd like to know how many properties were contacted about this prior to it going to the zoning board of appeals?
Let's see. In the ZBA staff report?
Because this is like right there on the corner, Pennsylvania and Lincoln Avenue.
28 on?
28 neighboring property owners were notified of the request.
Okay. And I think I noticed that there was a posting for this. There were two signs on the property
Yes.
near the corner of the intersection
Yes.
in very small print, at a location where it's not convenient to stop a vehicle to read the sign. Because if you're going north on Lincoln, if you're lucky and you get the light right, you can have somebody in the passenger seat take a picture of it.
Right.
On Pennsylvania, there's no parking in front of this facility. So is it typical that when we're noticing the neighborhood, we do it in such a tiny, small way, or do we normally have signs?
This is our standard sign publication. It fits on an eight and a half.
And it's on the property that's being impacted?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just the unfortunate location of this property that made it very hard for someone who saw that sign and wanted to know what it was about, had to go park on Vermont and walk around the corner or whatever?
So, for example, for the rezoning for the sliver of property up at the oil change facility, which is on Cunningham, which is a 35 mile an hour zone, there's no light. You could pull into the parking lot, which is what I did to post the signs. And then, you know, we also post the legal ad in the newspaper as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because I think, I think, I'm sure everything was done appropriately, but we have occasionally had neighbors, people close to a rezoning conversation that said, and we had no idea, right? Or they didn't get a notice in the mail or what have you. So I just wanted to understand the process a little better. So if that comes up again, we can explain what went on.
There are different ways to do it, other jurisdictions, and of course, that sign, you know, one benefit of that sign is we print those up custom for each, you know, case. So it actually has the case number on it and has a short description of what the request is. Other cities, I think, including Champaign and Normal, have a, this property is subject to a public hearing, go to this website, which allows for larger font, you know, to be able to be seen. You know, you can see, oh, public hearing, it's a public hearing. If I have a question about it, I go to the website and Google "public hearing" on their website, and it takes me to an individual page. Our zoning ordinance, I believe, requires us to put certain bits of information on it. So if we wanted to change what goes on a sign, then we would have to update the zoning ordinance.
Is anybody using, like, QR codes to make that a little bit easier?
I believe I've seen QR codes as well, and then it takes you to that website for the city's planning division.
Thank you for indulging me.
Absolutely. It's a great question. You know, we try and focus on the giant font public hearing, so even if you can't read anything else, you know, oh, something's going on here, I should contact the city and ask whoever answers the phone, or if you know enough to contact the planning division, you can say, I saw a thing there at this location, what's going on?
Yeah, I knew enough to go read the agenda for the zoning board of appeals, but, you know, we know those things.
Yes, yes.
Mary Alice?
Is it fair to say that the reason that we are doing it is simply because they are enclosing that staircase, even though they're replacing the staircase? If they just replace the staircase as-is without enclosing it, it wouldn't be changing the FAR. Is that fair to say?
I believe, yes, correct.
Okay. So by making it, I'm going to call it weather resistant, easier to use, they're in, or they're changing their FAR?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I will point out currently that the FAR is already non-conforming, so it will actually bring the building into conformity. And a side benefit of that is if it were damaged by fire or tornado, you know, if you exceed a certain percentage of damage on a legally non-conforming structure, you cannot repair it.
Right, right.
So this will allow, you know, improvements to be done and allow for future repair.
So this, this building was built in 1927, remodeled, I'm going to call it remodeled, in 1979. When did our zoning regulations list the FAR? Do you know what year?
Oh, many, many years. Okay. So it was actually zoned R1, one and two family residence from 1950 to 1962. And then, from '62 to '77, it was zoned R5, which was fraternities, sororities. There were still, there were no lot coverage regulations through that time.
I guess, let me rephrase. So the FAR requirement, do you know roughly when that was put in place?
The initial FAR was put in place in 1979, when it was zoned R6, and that FAR was 1.4.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. So Marcus, it's a fire escape, and it's there so I can get out of the burning building. And I guess it's counterintuitive to me to then enclose it. I'm thinking smoke is what I'm thinking of. Has the fire department been, is it safe, I guess, is my question?
I would compare it to a hotel's end stairwells, where all of the stories, floors are connected. You know, different places, though, either control that access, so you can't enter it, so it's absolutely only an egress. I believe this stair tower is going to be designed also for internal circulation, so if you want to go from the first floor to the third floor or vice versa, even when there's not a fire, it's not just a fire escape, it's also a stairwell. I'll let Mr. Muncaster answer any specific questions about access and use, though.
I just, has our fire department kind of signed off on this?
We discussed this at a development review team meeting. I'm not sure if they were at any of those, but they get all of the DRT agendas. Now, they are, though, part of our building permit application process on all plans. So they will eventually, you know, review this and do their review.
Okay.
Mary Alice, could you?
Sure, I'll take the chair. Chair will recognize Sharice.
I guess the question that I have is kind of piggybacking what Chris said as far as, I would like to know that the, that the fire, the fire investigator, the fire person, our new chief, one of our new chiefs, has actually considered or seen a design, at least, and said, this will, this will be, you know, this will work, this will be safe, fire-safe. And I see the gentleman there. Can I have the chair back?
Yes, you can have the chair back.
Thank you. He, you want to come and answer some questions? Just pull it, oh, sweetie, it's magnetic. You push the button, it's all green. There you go.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah. So the one thing I would start by saying is that if you look at modern codes, fire escapes are generally not allowed to be constructed new. And that's because they've kind of fallen out of disfavor, because, first of all, they're open to the elements. So if you're in a fire and you got to get out, and it's raining, you go out in the rain, or if it's snow, or if it's icy, they are exposed to the weather, so they require more maintenance. They, some, you know, in taller buildings especially, some people are afraid of heights, and so they go outside and they don't want to follow it because of that. So they've really fallen out of disfavor. If you have a fire escape, you can rebuild it, but the code generally only allows for new enclosed stairs. And they are required to be wider than what a fire escape would be, too, so you can have, like, two people going down at the same time as opposed to one.
So are you going to be building the new fire escape so that it accommodates two people going down the stairs at once?
The basic requirements require that, yeah.
Okay, and the other question I have is, have you talked to the fire chief, or the investigator, the person that would kind of sign off and say?
Marcus would be the one who had any communication with them thus far. We follow the codes.
I know, but since we're calling it a fire escape, I just thought that you might want to talk to the people who actually have to deal with fires. They would be the experts in that.
Right, and they would review the plan during the building permit application process, and then any, you know, they would correct any things that did not meet code, as well as the building official, Nick Hansen. I don't think we've had any preliminary discussions with the fire chief.
Okay, well, that's just a suggestion. Chris?
But what I'm hearing, though, is that new standards have found that an enclosed fire staircase is actually safer. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, that's fine.
James?
I think the problem is, we're calling this a fire escape, and what they're going to build is an additional staircase that meets code and provides a way to exit the building if the main staircase is engulfed in flames or smoke. So if it meets code, the fire department, when they look at this, is going to sign off on it. They're going to say, oh, it meets code.
So is it a matter, then, of us just changing what it actually is? Like, can you change the, is that?
That's what the proposal is. They're going to take down this archaic fire escape and build a new stairwell on the end of the building.
Yeah, so they're actually going to tear down the old fire escape and build a new enclosed stair tower with new stairs in it.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Chris. Chris?
Yeah. So there is a fire escape plan somewhere, somehow, right?
So you can see the fire escape in red there
Right.
on the side of the building.
Right. But the s-
So that would be tore down
Right.
And basically, another enclosed stair would be built in almost the same location, essentially.
But it functions as both a regular end staircase?
And a communication staircase as well.
Okay, all right.
Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I will move ordinance number 2024-10032, an ordinance approving a major variance for the farmhouse floor area at 809 West Pennsylvania Avenue. Case number ZBA 2024, major 01, onto the consent agenda at the city council.
Second.
Okay, Mary Alice moved. Jaya seconded. Discussion? Mary Alice, I'm always looking to my left first, I don't know, I guess because you guys are like right here, so, sorry, I'm not trying to ignore you.
So, so I want to say I'm very appreciative of this plan and the continued improvement of the building. I recognize that we have struggled a bit with some of these older sorority and fraternity houses, and I really appreciate, appreciate the longevity of the farmhouse. So I'm in strong support of this project. I think it will increase safety and also bring the building up to better code.
James?
I was just gonna add, yes, I'm supportive. As someone who periodically sees the young men of this fraternity standing out on the street with fire trucks there checking something out, fire alarm, tests, you know, fire test, whatever, I think this will be a good improvement for them.
Any more comments or discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry? Was that consent?
Okay, moving on, next. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, sir, for answering our questions. Number two, resolution number 2024-10-069R, resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses, the Class P package designation for Vishna Nia Naya Urbana Inc. DBA, a Black Fox Convenience and Liquor in North Cunningham Avenue, Urbana, Illinois. And Mayor Marlin, you are the?
Actually, a slight correction, the resolution is to approve a Class P liquor license. It's not increasing the number of liquor licenses for this particular designation because this is replacing a current licensee, the business currently there was sold, we have a new owner, a new business name, so we have to issue a new liquor license, but it's in the same location. So you're asked to approve the resolution attached that authorizes a Class P liquor license. This is for package liquor store that permits a licensee to sell at retail any and all alcoholic liquor in the original package form for consumption off premises only. The applicant is Vishna Naya, he's from Urbana Inc., doing business as Black Fox Convenience and Liquor, and the location is 602 North Cunningham Avenue.
Do I have a motion of any sorts, or, okay, Grace?
I had a question, if we could just get a little clarification for myself and anyone else who may be wondering about the changes in the kind of differences of process, we've been doing this with resolution versus ordinance, and then increasing the number of licenses versus approving one actual license. And so I didn't know if we could just have a little insight or background into some of those changes, and just kind of making sure we are doing things correctly now and why the changes.
To your second question, when we have a new liquor license, a new applicant, that does increase the number, total number of liquor licenses in the city of Urbana. And Urbana does not have a cap or have a certain number of licenses available, so every time a license is approved, a new license is approved, that increases the overall number of licenses in the city. So if, if, if it's a new license, it will be increasing the number of liquor licenses. If it's a replacement, it's maintaining the same number of licenses. And we did go, we had previously been using an ordinance, and it was determined that we could go by resolution, and we maintain a list and a number of liquor licenses in our
Next, any more questions?
I'll make a motion.
Mary Alice?
I will move resolution number 2024-10069R, resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class P, no, we're not increasing it, a change?
I'm sorry. It's the title of the resolution is one that's before you. You're basically approving a liquor license.
Okay, here we go. Resolution approving a liquor license in the Class P designation for Vishna Naya Urbana INC., doing business as Black Fox Convenience and Liquor at 602 North Cunningham Avenue in Urbana, Illinois, onto the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Mary Alice moved, and, and James seconded. Do we have any more discussion to have with this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next, we, and last, we have a resolution number 2024-10-070R, a resolution adopting open meeting procedures for the alternative response task force in, Mayor Marlin, are you, who's, oh, okay, Will is talking to this, speaking to this.
Thank you. So I will introduce the, the resolution very briefly, and because the resolution itself is pretty brief. Last week, city council requested that staff develop a resolution concerning the alternative task force and open meeting act compliance. And this alternative task force is part of the community safety review being undertaken, undertaken by Barry Dunn. So we've drafted a resolution that says any meeting of the alternative task force that meets as part of the community safety review should be open to the public, and its meetings conducted in a manner consistent with the open meetings procedures of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. So that's what the, the word says in practice. What this means is those meetings would be properly noticed, there would be availability for the public to attend and provide public input, there would be video streaming and recording options, and then there would be minutes taken real briefly. So that is the council, the resolution that we prepared for you based off of the discussion last week.
Mayor?
And I would add, we had two phone calls with Barry Dunn last week. They are willing to follow these procedures per the open meetings act. They did have a request, though, they wanted us to clarify in writing, so basically put in writing what the expectations are for conducting meetings per OMA, so that we're all operating on the same page, and that would become part of a contract amendment. So it's very clearly spelled out in the agreement we have with Barry Dunn.
Grace?
Does the open meetings act require that video streaming and posting? Because I thought my understanding was that that's kind of above and beyond, like, just minutes would suffice.
So the open meetings act does require a verbatim record exist for a certain period of time, and a verbatim record, in our instance, we frequently use video recordings. However, audio recordings also constitute verbatim record, but a verbatim record in addition to the minutes per the OMA must exist for a period of time.
Chris?
Will, does, does the committee, I'm, I'm sorry, the task force, they set the parameters for how public input would happen? Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'll let the city attorney provide any additional clarification if there is some, but yes.
Yeah, it's, it would be up to the task, task force, city attorney, what, what would be, you know, reasonable rules for public comment? So given the nature of the, of the group that's, you know, meeting to discuss topical matters, you know, they may opt to make the time shorter potentially for, per comment, and the total time shorter potentially. But that's gonna be up to the task force once they meet and, you know, develop sort of the, the rules for doing the business of the group.
And as the city clerk is the OMA designee for the city of Urbana, the city clerk's office's resources are fully available to all boards and commissions as they are to the city council.
Grace?
Another question is, when did Barry Dunn complete Phase Two to review the alternative community safety models and options and trends? Because I have not heard of that, and it's not on our website, and it says in here that it's been completed. And then I also wonder, why would it be completed, and then they put together a community task force?
So that phrasing is from their scope of work that is in their proposal, and it relates to the billing cycle. Yeah, it's, so that relates directly to the contract language of the phase, but to your point, it's not maybe the most clear wording for where it is in practice.
I don't know that that clarified it. Mark, could you try again? So they haven't done it, it's just a budget requirement? I guess my question is, is Phase, is Phase Two complete or not, or in progress? What's their deal?
In their scope of work, in their project deliverables they have, and as, as, in the manner in which they bill, based off the work, they have a different set of deliverables, which is on their social, the, the drafts or the scope of work is on the social pinpoint website that they have, so you can see it there. And then that's how they title those particular sections and the scope of work. There's, I don't know the exact phrasing of this specific task they're talking about, but that wording was driven, taken from the, the scope of work that we have with them. It's, it's a little confusing, I understand your confusion, the, the language from here was just taken from the scope of work as, as it's referenced in the contract, which may not be how we're popularly conceptualizing where we are in the process.
Mayor?
Two reports we've actually received are the staffing analysis and the analysis of the calls for service. That's right, Carol, right?
Maybe the best thing to do is just to send a link and identify the pieces that we've gotten.
Which are the staffing analysis and the calls for service?
Yeah, I don't think we've gotten anything else, but we might have, I, I just can't remember at the moment. So we can, we can do that.
Well, Grace, you remember, there is a second report, remember, that was sent? Maybe that's what's being called, Phase Two? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Grace?
Yeah, would appreciate some more information. I find that concerning that there's three phases listed here, and that second one about reviewing alternative models. I would really like to know some more information, especially if they are already reviewing stuff before speaking to the community.
Jaya?
Yeah, thanks. On the social pinpoint site, it says we're in that current phase. So I, I think, yeah, clarifying the language.
One else?
I have the, the work plan pulled up here. Forgive me, but could you clarify the specific question? Are we in Phase Three, essentially? And the, the answer is, yes, we'd be at step 3.1, where the committee is contemplating.
Yeah, so what is Phase Two in here? Can you scroll up to Phase Two, please, Will? Could also get a little clarification for how people access this? I don't know what the social point is. I clicked on the link, and I still don't understand how to get any useful information
Yeah, sorry, I scrolled through that really fast. So on, you know, we have our city link here, which is maybe the easiest place to find it. There's clicking this link, you get the overall title page. And this pinpoint was developed really during the early stages of the community feedback. And you just keep scrolling to the bottom, you'll see the different documents. So you'll see the first deliverable, and then you'll see the, the second deliverable report here. And then what I clicked on is this project work plan and schedule. So this is the language that was, I just referenced that language in drafting the
Mary Alice?
So it looks like, based on, on the quick scan of this, that Phase Two is not
Jaya?
So if you go back to the, I think there's, part of the issue is it's, different phases are listed differently in different places. So on social pinpoint, if you go back, Will, to where you were, and just go a little bit farther down, no, sorry, back on social pinpoint, you can see it says current phase, Phase Two. So I think clarifying the language, because it does seem to be that phases are described differently, depending on which piece we're looking at, would be important for, for this.
I don't, so, I'll, just a little bit insight on when I chose that particular language from the deliverables, really tying it to the 3.1. That just, the logic behind that one was so that there's a kind of a conclusion with the alternative safety task force, which was kind of contemplated in 3.1, so that when this section ends, the open meeting acts requirements of meeting also terminates along with that, so it doesn't just, so it's nice and tidy. So that was the logic behind that, but there doesn't have to be, that doesn't have to be that language.
James?
The problem is, this is called Phase Two in the other tier, and it's called Phase Three here. And so I think what matters is what's in the contract. Is this the contract that we're looking at right here, or is this the project description?
This, you're, you're closer to saying it's the contract. The contract actually has even slightly different version than this. This final scope of work is taken from the contract and was the, their first staffed deliverable to us.
So if you scroll up a little bit more, sorry, down, further down the document, Phase Two here, wait, don't go past that. This is the call for service analysis.
It's the same title.
Yeah, there's, there's a problem with the language here. As I was looking at 2.5 there, which is the?
Mayor?
Call for service evaluation report.
In, in the first large report, there is a section that discusses alternative response models used in different cities, and that could be what that's referring to there. It does not mean that they have already analyzed or have done the work of the task force. So I think they, they included kind of a general overview of some different alternative response possibilities in that first large report that they delivered.
Mary Alice?
I think what I'm hearing everybody say is that we need to reflect the language of the actual contract, because that's what we're gonna be held to. So whatever that, wherever this phase lives in, in the contract itself, not in any of these documents, is what should be in this resolution.
Okay, you can do that.
All right. Mary Alice?
All right, so with that, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna put it on the regular agenda so that that clarification can be made. I'll move resolution number 2024-1007R, sorry, 070R, resolution adopting open meeting procedures for the alternative response task force, onto the next city council meeting, regular agenda.
Discussion? James?
I, I just needed to be clearer than my, and right now, I-
I, I just needed to be clearer than mud and right now it's no clearer than mud.
Grace?
Didn't you have your hand up at the same time? Jayah?
Yeah, Will, I appreciate your work on this. I think one thing that could be worth considering is this is very tied to the contract language and I think some of this is more about just making sure that the alter, how, kind of defining how the alternate task force needs to function. And I wonder if that might be a way of kind of clarifying some of the language, if not so much of, and I hear what you're saying of like, not wanting to extend this out too far into the process if that's not applicable, but I think for the task force, making it clear that that's the piece, that that might be a way of providing some of that clarity without, you know, if we've got a contract and then a scope of work and then the social pinpoint website and they're all saying different things, that another way to do it might be saying, clarifying that this applies to the work of the task force.
Mary Alice?
Can we just remove the second whereas? Because the actual therefore says any meeting of the alternative response task force. So if we just remove the second whereas, then we don't have anything about phases. And then the third whereas specifically talks about the collaborative committee comprised of public safety, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know, Jay, if that would solve that?
Jayah?
I, I think that would be one way. You know, just again, I think it is that second whereas that is, as James said, is clear as mud.
Grace?
Yeah, I agree with getting rid of that language. I hope that's not the case. I guess I didn't quite flag how these phases were written. I do hope that Barry Dunn is coming in with somewhat of an open mind and ready to be, ready to be open to the creativeness of our community stakeholders and not just coming in with pre-existing ideas on how they think it should go before we enter into it. And then I would also like to, I would move an amendment here that we add in the therefore section that we, that's at the end, consistent with open meeting procedures, Illinois Open Meetings Act, with video recording, wordsmithing totally open from other people. But I would just like to essentially clarify the video recording in similar fashion to other city meetings, just since that's not specifically required in Open Meetings Act, especially when there's a lot of people and you don't know their voices. Like when we did council goals and we had just the audio recording, there's no way you could make out any of that, I think. So I do think that we need to have the video recording and then we need to try and make sure that it is actually audible. There's not just one video recorder and 20 people talking at once and say, well, we met the bar, it's recorded. I think that the point here is that it's understandable for people who want to watch and participate. So I would like to add some further specificity about the video recording since that's not inherently in there already.
Mary Alice?
So I'm, I'm trying to visualize this, Grace. It sounds to me like you want video recordings of any group, any breakoff groups during the meeting. Is that correct? No. I misunderstood.
So similar to?
Similar to how we did the council goals?
With the breakout rooms, I don't know if there was video recording in that other round.
Well, there's, there's video, there was video recording of the entire place where we are all sitting. And when we all came, like, there was just one video recording and we only have one videographer. So I, I feel like
I don't remember if they were video recorded or not.
So we did it both ways. So the sessions that were in council chambers, it was continuously video recorded, even when they were in the breakout groups, but if, unless they were speaking into a mic, it was not caught on the audio. When we were in facilities other than council chambers, whether that was Ileas or Stone Creek Church, it was just an audio recording. And again, the only thing that was discernibly picked up is when individuals spoke one at a time into a microphone. But to Grace's point, with an audio, you don't see the face that is speaking when it's an audio recording.
Grace?
I don't know if I can try again. If, I'd like to make a formal amendment that we include that video language in here, if anyone's willing to second.
Second.
Okay, Grace has an amendment. What are you having, what are you amending again?
To require video recording to be streamed and posted similar fashion to other city council and commission meetings.
And?
And that that could be legally wordsmithed as needed, hopefully by the council meeting.
Question?
Carol?
So I just, I just want to get on the record because there's a logistical question that to me hasn't been fully answered yet. So just bear with me. The logistical question is, for what you're offering as an amendment, will what Darcy described, what the question that Mary Alice was trying to get at, is if there are breakoff groups and there is a single video of a series of conversations that are not on a mic because they're happening in small groups, but there is a video of those conversations taking place, does that satisfy what you're driving at? Otherwise, we need multiple videographers and those small groups need to have, they need to be mic'd individually.
If I may, I think that would be awesome, but I don't think that we want to still have the support or the resources for that and it's a little beyond what we expect in other things. So I think that as it is written now and with Open Meetings Act, those breakout rooms are allowed, right? We would treat it kind of like we do with anything else, that it was a certain number limited to a quorum so that those breakout rooms don't become their own separate meetings within a meeting. And so to my understanding, that would still be allowed and still have one video and one audio. So all of that is still allowable under this resolution, even by including video recording. And then I personally don't, I would like, but I don't expect, and it's not written here to require that to be for every breakout room, but for the entire meeting as a one whole.
Okay, Chris?
So, Darcy, how do we keep minutes when there's breakout groups and different tables?
So, and we, we've done this. So we have minutes to refer back to in the clerk's office if we're the ones taking minutes, would be happy to take direction on any changes to the existing format. But basically, what is noted is that the composition is described such that it's like no more than two or, for, for council, it was no more than two electeds per table intermixed with staff or whomever they were sitting with. And usually when they split into breakout groups, we had a facilitator here and they directed the groups to discuss a specific question or a series of questions. So the minutes reflected what those questions were that the breakout groups were discussing. And then once they came out of the breakout groups, individuals one at a time spoke and that was what was captured in the minutes. So it's primarily the composition of the room, who is where, what they are charged with, and then the after is what is recorded in the minutes.
Mayor?
Just, just to, just to confirm, the expectation is that there will be opportunity for in-person observation or an audience attending, recording, video recording, and then live streaming. Okay, that's what we do typically, all right.
Jayah?
Yeah, just one more point of clarification to confirm that this will be binding.
Yes, yes.
Anybody?
I'm looking at the lawyer, he's looking at me. Yes.
That the resolution will be binding. The content of the resolution to conduct the meeting in a manner consistent with the open meetings principles in the Open Meetings Act, as it is encapsulated in a, an addendum or amendment to the contract, if both parties are in agreement, then it's binding per the contract that we have with Barry Dunn.
Jayah?
Yeah, so to clarify, I'm not as, I'm not thinking so much of it from the contractual perspective, but in terms of our commitment to the community, that if we say we are doing this and we're passing this resolution, that is what will happen. And I'm asking because previous agreements have been put in non-binding sections and I want to make sure that this is something that will be adhered to and not changed at a whim.
This will be, this will be adhered to.
Can, can I ask a more specific legal question of our council? So does this resolution effectively bind the alternative response task force as a subsidiary body of the City of Urbana that is legally required to abide by the Open Meetings Act?
So, there's a lot in that question. I think we discussed this at the last meeting, that the legal status of the task force as it's, as it's presently constituted, as it was formed, the nature of what it does, it falls into a very gray area under OMA in terms of what constitutes a public body or a subsidiary body. The purpose of this resolution is essentially opting to apply the principles of OMA to a body that is arguably not a public body. And that from a legal standpoint, a compelling argument could be made that it's not legally subject to OMA under normal circumstances. So this, this council is by resolution telling the administration, staff, as well as our consultant, and also ensuring that these procedures that have been articulated and discussed here, if adopted into the contract, will be binding upon the process and upon the board. I think the board will have clear direction in terms of how they're expected to proceed with, with meetings. So from a purely legal standpoint, we cannot opt to make this group a public body or a subsidiary, subsidiary body simply by resolving to adhere to these procedures for open, open meetings. I'm sure that's clear as mud, as James would say, but that's legally, my opinion, and I think where we are.
Chris?
Well?
Okay, Jayah?
Thanks. So, I appreciate this is complicated and that's why I think it's important conversation. If for some reason Barry Dunn comes back and says, nope, can't do it, can't, can't meet the expectations of this, what I'm trying to ascertain is, are we making it clear that our expectations for this group is that they will abide by these standards and that there'll be some form of accountability?
That's already been made clear. I'm sure that Mayor Marley made that clear in her conversation with the consultant. I, I did as well.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And, and I'm, I'm saying not just for the consultant, but I'm saying for how we are saying that this task force will operate, consultant aside. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
I guess I'm not, you're asking whether, whether, whether we have this consultant or not, for this task force, independent of any relationship with a third party that's facilitating the meetings, are we binding the task force legally? I think it's, I think it's a gray area. The council didn't create the task force. It wasn't a formal, it's not created by resolution or ordinance. That's one of the, the criteria. Council is essentially empowering the administration and staff, directing the administration and staff to carry this out in this fashion. And so because it was formed, as I understand it, again, I, I'm new, okay, I wasn't here from the beginning of these discussions, so forgive me if I, if I characterize something in a manner that's not precisely consistent with all of the history. But my understanding is the task force was discussed in terms of its composition, who would be invited to participate, what representatives from what constituent groups would be invited. And those invitations were made and accepted, as I understand it. In terms of taking a formal vote and appointing members to a subsidiary body, like a board or commission, that was not something that happened at the council, at the council level and that's a distinction. I, I, I think it's, it's an unusual thing that we're, that we're doing, but it's because council's clear consensus on wanting to make this an absolute priority to prioritize transparency and openness in the meeting. And so the question of whether it's legally binding, I'm not sure that council, given the nature of the form of government, has legal authority to directly bind. Just as we talked about the procedures, this group will have the authority to create its own rules for public, public input, right? That could be different. We, we discussed, they have to offer some rules, but council stops short of prescribing how many people, how long total, and the amount of time per, per commenter. And I think that speaks to the question about the authority and the, the legal binding nature of it. I think council's making clear its, its direction and its intent for this group that's going to be bringing recommendations back, right? So they're advising council on this particular issue. I, I think it's as clear of a mandate as you can provide as a city council to this group.
Jayah?
Yeah, thank you. I really, I appreciate that. I think it, from what I'm hearing is that it's not in that hard, official, legal sense binding. And I think that's information that our community has a right to know. I do think that this council has made it very clear what the intent is and I think it's important to have that on the record. So thank you.
Chris?
I think the mayor did say earlier that Barry Dunn has asked for things to be in writing. And I'm feeling like they've kind of agreed to what we said last week. Okay, I'm just, but Matt, is it, is it possible that they could, as a, as a party to the contract, go, well, we don't accept those terms? But I don't think that's going to happen is what I'm hearing, though.
Yes, that's possible. They absolutely could see the proposed amendment or addendum and the description of what it means to conduct the meeting in a manner consistent with OMA and they could say, we don't feel like we can conduct effective sessions by these parameters, therefore, we're not going to agree to it. That's an absolute possibility. It takes both parties to, you know, kind of be on the same page, literally and figuratively on an amendment like this. So that is, that is one outcome that's a possibility.
James?
Yeah, so, so what I'm hearing is that although the council, I think formally approved the makeup of the commission because we didn't come back afterwards and name those individuals and appoint them, that's the distinction that we're drawing between a subsidiary-created committee, of course, what have you, versus a
Resolution or ordinance, too.
An-hoc committee appointed by the mayor based on our guidance on who should be members.
Yeah, that's the distinction. I see that.
And so because we're in that space, would it be safe to say that this resolution does all that we can legally do to communicate and attempt to enforce our will, but we can't usurp the state's responsibility to say, now this is a OMA governed body?
I think that's an accurate statement.
We're doing everything we can under the circumstance, we don't have the power to do that second part.
Absolutely. We can make some tweaks, as discussed, to the resolution, but within the sort of framework of the authority that can be exercised, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. I'm going to just go on the same thought process a little further, sorry, of, so say, you know, we pass this, we hypothetically, Barry Dunn says, no, they don't agree to adding that in the contract, then could there still be these alternative task force meetings that aren't open? Just saying, like, I, I understand that they could take it or leave it and say, okay, if Barry Dunn doesn't want to have them open, then we choose to not have them go a different direction, whatever. But is it still an option to have these task force meetings be closed even with this resolution?
I, I think that's going to be up to, ultimately up to council and, and the administration and how, how we would pivot if Barry Dunn walks away. The concept of the, the collaborative committee, as it's described in Section 3.1 of the work plan, that we refer to as the alternative response task force, that plan, that we refer to as the Alternative Response Task Force, that concept is a, you know, it's a creation of this plan in particular. So whether to continue with those, with something similar or the same group, under a different facilitator or model, I think, is going to be for future consideration. Certainly, I would suggest that if a new resolution were needed, or if we needed to point to some mandate or direction in terms of how to conduct the groups, you can point back to the document that is being discussed tonight. It does reference Barry Dunn in particular because of its origin in this contractual relationship, but certainly could easily be applied through some future model or some future committee that would convene, whether it's this one or some other formation.
So I guess, if I may just, it's a simpler one. So does this resolution prevent the Alternative Response Task Force meetings from being closed? Or is it still an allowable option that they just go on closed regardless of this resolution? Because I guess I'm not understanding why Barry Dunn has to accept it. Is it still allowed?
If they agree to the addendum to the contract that we would put forward, which is a request they've made, then it would be a contractual violation if they did not.
Mary Alice?
Can I just make a friendly amendment in terms of, just to get this resolution all
So we have an amendment on the floor currently.
Right, I know. I was going to ask if she could add something to her amendment. Is that good? All right, thank you. I just want to remove the second whereas, and then hopefully, everything is ready to go. I don't know if Grace is amenable to that.
To, Ms. Ruth, so you'd like to change the amendment, amend by amendment, to get rid of the second whereas?
Yes.
In addition to the original amendment of adding something along the lines of video recording and streaming?
Yep.
I am amenable to that. I think Jaya was my second.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So we have the amendment to require the video recording, and now we have an amendment to the amendment. Is that what we have? Darcy?
So we have still one amendment on the floor that was amended with a friendly amendment. So it is still the same amendment, that is the singular amendment up for discussion at this time, which is encompassing the video recording and removing the second whereas.
Okay, any discussion regarding the amendment point two? All right, so will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment point two?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yeah.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Now, back to amendment point one. No.
The main motion.
The main motion to, for resolution, resolution adopting open meeting, blah, 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 for that? Okay.
That's legal language.
Yeah, I know, it is. Okay, we've had our discussion about that? I know we've had, I know it was moved to the second, and now, have we had our discussion, and that was the whole amendment point two?
Well, we can continue discussion.
Okay, so can we get, do we have any more discussion for the blah-blah amendment, which is, Grace? Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Just want to say, I appreciate getting this written up by staff and informing us, working through this process. Appreciate council's support on this, and the public coming out and speaking about this. I think this is really important, and a lot of people want to follow along. I would appreciate some more information about the, how legally binding this is. I guess my question is, could they still be closed with this resolution? You can think it's silly, but we've been duped so many times that I think it's an important question, and we still haven't gotten a very clear answer. So I think it would be great by next meeting if we could have a little more information about the scenarios, if they would still be allowed to be closed, even with this resolution.
James?
I think that's a concern that needs to be raised when we can't get a contract with Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn is not going to proceed with closed meetings if we don't have a contract amendment with them, because they aren't doing what we asked them to do. And so, we might as well, you know, ask what happens if Barry Dunn goes bankrupt next We would have to deal with that when that came up. I don't, I don't understand this obsession with the meetings proceeding closed, when we've clearly articulated as a council that we don't want that to happen. And I think it, I feel people getting ready to say, "Well, we've been duped before, and we want to protect against it." Oh, my gosh. I mean, it's continuing, time after time, you know, the presumption of no, the presumption of, you know, changes have been made on every step of this, because there have been concerns raised. Understand that that's what's going to have to happen going forward. If things change, and they're not acceptable to this council, we're going to be back here, we're going to be having a conversation about what we want and enforcing it. Everybody has been unanimous on this over the last two weeks, and now we just keep on trying to find ways to make this process unsuccessful. Really feel like people are continuing to look for ways to make this not come out with a recommendation that we can move forward with, and that's going to be really disappointing.
Jaya?
I'm going to have to respectfully disagree. I think that it's, and I understand that you saw this coming, I'm very happy for you, if you haven't had that experience, where you've thought there was clear consensus from this council, and things have gone a very different way, despite public engagement, despite a majority or plurality, or even all of the council agreeing to something, and that not being how it was actually implemented. So I can say for myself, at least, I'm advocating for a clear understanding, because there have been other times where we thought it was clear what we were agreeing to, including the fact that we expected this to be open in the first place, and that's why we're asking for clarification, or at least, I can speak for myself, that that's why I'm trying to understand if something changes, and hopefully, it won't. It sounds like great progress has been made from last week to this week, and I'm very grateful for that. But I think that our community has a right to know what steps we're taking to make sure that this process is moving forward in the way that we have committed to, and that if it does not, that they understand why that is the case. So this is something that I started, right? I allocated funds with another council member to say, "We need this," and the way that was implemented was not how our council said it should happen. So I have a reason to be suspicious, I have a reason to ask for clarification, and try to make sure I understand what I am agreeing to, so that I can explain to my constituents, our community members, if that's not how it proceeds, so they know who is making the decisions to go against the will of this council, and what they have said that they want from individuals who sit at this table. So I am hoping for the best. I think that we've made great progress, I'm very impressed with how quickly city staff put this together, I'm very happy to hear about the conversations that have happened so far with Barry Dunn, and I look forward to hopefully passing a resolution next week that will allow us to move forward and make meaningful change this year. I think that's still possible.
Okay, are we done? All right, let's have a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, council, thank you, Will. Council input and communications. Mary Alice?
So I first want to apologize that I didn't get the full name of the woman who came up today during public input. Sandra was the first name that I got. Otten?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I encourage her, if she's still watching online or recording, to email city council. I'd like to have her contact information. I think what she brought to council tonight is concerning and is worth investigating. Certainly, we have gun violence, unfortunately, happening in our community, and I know that the police department takes gun violence very, you know, very seriously, so I'm confused about what happened here. So I just wanted to, A, thank the person for coming out and telling us about their experience, and B, say that I'd like to have this followed up on.
James?
Yeah, I want to take a moment to congratulate council and the community, and the organizations that we have funded with ARPA. I think we saw a very commendable set of accomplishments that have occurred, I mean, tangible things that have occurred programmatically. I really appreciated the list of things that are going to persist beyond ARPA funds, in the way that programs don't necessarily persist, the, you know, the bricks and mortar, or the vehicles that have been established. And I can tell you that the process to get to what we funded with ARPA was engaged and long, and at some, in some points, difficult, but I hope everybody takes a chance to enjoy the impact that that effort has led to, and I'm looking forward to having a chance to look at what's been successful, and maybe support some of the things that we couldn't support fully with that $200,000 that's available to reallocate. Thank you.
Jaya?
Thank you. So, a couple things, I, you know, echo James's comment about all of the amazing work that's happened with the ARPA money, and thanks to Will and JD for presenting and guiding that process. I know it's been a long, long road. I think it's also important for us to start thinking ahead of what the impact of that money going away is. We do still have a couple years for some of the funded agencies, but I think it's important for this and future councils to keep in mind that those are resources that are leaving our community, right? And that that impact is already starting to be felt on service providers, and for individuals who had access to additional benefits during time where COVID-related funding was available. So I think it's something we need to monitor, what that impact is likely to be. I also wanted to speak to what Mary Alice brought up. This is the second time in a very short period of time we've heard concerns about calls coming in to our police department. I know we have so many amazing officers, but if those calls aren't even getting to them, that's really concerning to me. And, you know, two incidents proves a pattern, right? So I'd like to better understanding of how are those calls being screened, and where is the disconnect, where, you know, situations like a child abduction and a threat with a gun are not being even sent to an officer? So I do look forward to hearing more information, and encourage community members to continue to reach out to us whenever an incident like that happens.
Chris?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback that concern, and with the other thing, that is that the police department continues to disbelieve these stories and shut them down, and so that was also part of the story, too. So I'm just hoping that we can, like I said earlier, problems have solutions, and I hope we can get to that.
Ian?
We will ask UPD to look into what happened on August 26th.
I'd like to say something, too, regarding that whole situation, and I am sorry for Ms. Ott. So, Otten? And this is a fear that I had regarding the fact that we don't have enough police officers. I've been in a situation already with my neighbors where the police could not show up because there weren't enough people, there were not enough patrol officers. We have people who complain about patrol officers. We have people who complain about how many police we have. We have people who don't think that we should pay for more officers. So this is where we are, a tornado, a mess, that is going, I think, unfortunately, probably get worse before it gets better. You can only do so much with so many people, and I really feel bad that unfortunately, it may be some, you know, very innocent people that have to suffer for it. So I'm hoping that there is also some type of explanation, the only one I can think of right now is called triage, and it is what it is, and that's unfortunate. So I do hope that her next encounters with the police department definitely is more positive and more effective. And that's all I can say right now. Without any more business, anybody else got something else to say? Without any more business before the community hall, we are adjourned.